Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the February 23rd, 2021 Public Hearing Public Meeting of the New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission. I will call the roll. Chair Carroll.
Here.
Commissioner Bland.
Bland.
Commissioner Bland, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Here.
Commissioner Chapin.
Here.
Commissioner Chen.
Yeah, here.
Commissioner Deventer.
Here.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Here.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Here.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Here.
Commissioner Lutfi. And Commissioner Holford Smith.
Here.
Okay, we're all set.
All right, thank you. And welcome, everyone, to the February 23rd Public Hearing and Public Meeting. Today, we will start the day with a public meeting item, which is a revised proposal for a project that has already had a public hearing and for which we've already heard testimony and given comments. The public meeting item will be followed by our public hearing agenda for today. And this meeting is being held via Zoom and livestreamed on YouTube. So if you'd like to watch the proceedings, please visit our YouTube channel to watch the livestream. If you would like to testify on any hearing items, please join the meeting at the estimated time for that item as shown on our hearing agenda, which can be found on our website. And so with that, I will turn it over to our Director of Preservation, Corey Harala, to lead us through our agendas today.
Thanks, Sarah, and good morning, everyone. We'll start today with public meeting item number one, LPC 20-10140, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 387 lot 4, 163 Bond Street in the Borum Hill Historic District Extension. This is an Anglo-Italian eight-style rowhouse built in 1870. The application is to construct rear yard and rooftop additions. This was last seen and heard at the public hearing of January 12th, 2021, and no action was taken at that time. The staff will now walk us through the revisions to the proposal.
Good morning, Commissioners. Marcello Pacheco, Preservation Staff. The item before you is 163 Bond Street in the Borum Hill Historic District. At the public hearing of January 12th, 2021, the Commissioners reviewed a proposal for the construction of rooftop and rear additions. No action was taken at that time. This is the original proposal, shown in section, which consisted of a full-height rear yard addition that connected to a rooftop addition with stair bulkhead. Most Commissioners expressed concerns that the cumulative effect of the additions as proposed would overwhelm the historic building, and that the full-height rear yard addition would eliminate the top floor of the existing rear facade shown here. Some Commissioners expressed further concerns about the visibility of the rooftop addition over the Bond Street facade, requesting that this visibility be eliminated or significantly reduced. Lastly, some Commissioners also requested that the materiality of the rooftop addition be restudied. In response to these comments, the applicants have returned with revisions to the proposal. The specific changes include revising the footprint and massing of the rooftop addition, including setting it back from the rear, the front, and the rear facades, and sloping the roofs, which eliminate the stair bulkhead requirement. This addition is now no longer visible from Bond Street. Revising the cladding material from brick to standing seam metal, which I'll show in the elevations, and reducing the height of the proposed rear yard addition, thus retaining the top floor at the existing rear facade. The rear addition has also been revised to extend further into the rear yard to align with the existing modern addition at the adjacent building. Just to briefly compare these changes a bit more closely, here are the two Bond Street elevations for comparison, followed by, and this is the original design, followed by the rear, sorry, followed by the rear elevations. Down here is the previous design, and here is the revision. The revised roof addition lowers the overall height, as you can see in these two slides, and eliminates guardrails and stair bulkhead from the bulk. The revised rear addition reduces the height to two stories in lieu of the previously proposed four, as you can see in these two slides, and retains the top floor at the existing These slides show the revised sections and sightlines from across Bond Street. And here is the revised design. Here are photos of the current mock-up of the rooftop addition, showing no visibility from across Bond Street, and additional visibility studies showing some of the views from Bond And lastly, a view from Wykoff Street showing the rear yard addition as seen through a side yard and in the context of the existing addition at the adjacent property. And that concludes the summary of revisions.
Right. Thank you, Marcello. That was very clear and hopeful. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Diana Chapin, please go ahead.
Yeah, it looks like the rear elevation that is part of the new addition metal, as well as the rooftop addition. What's the cladding on the back of the rear yard addition that is proposed?
Can I answer that? Sorry.
Marcello, can you answer that?
Yes, it is standing seam metal cladding. As you can see right, I believe this is the product right here that will be used in the finish of the windows down here.
Yeah, I assume that most of the other buildings are brick clad in this, in the rear yard. Is that correct?
In the remaining buildings on the row, yes. And then the adjacent building, there is a pretty modern addition prior to designation of this district.
So Marcello, do you want to just go to that view from through the backyard?
Thank you.
At the end of the presentation, the view through the...
I see, I see.
And so you can see the modern addition next door that it is seen in. So go to that, if you can go to that gap view, Marcello, you can see how it's visible in the context of that addition.
Yes. Sorry, what was that last comment? I cut out there.
The view from the street looking into the rear yards.
Yes.
So that's the view where you see it in the context of the modern addition next door. Okay, other questions? All right, and Commissioners, does anyone want to hear from the applicant at this point, or do we think we have all of our questions answered? Okay, so I think what we'll do is we'll move to our discussion. And, you know, I, okay, great, all right, let's move to our discussion. So as Marcello presented, this was a much larger addition that included both a rooftop addition that connected to a full-height rear yard addition, resulting in really a four-story rear facade, and then a stair bulkhead on top of that. After looking at the presentation and listening to testimony, we asked them to reduce the amount of addition on the building and study the visibility, and they have done that so that the addition no longer is visible over, the rooftop addition is no longer visible over the front, and by sloping it, they no longer need the bulkheads. And at the back, they significantly reduced the height of the addition to retain the top floor and did extend it to align with the adjacent building. So I think that they've been very responsive to the comments we made, but let's go around the table and have a discussion about it. So Commissioner Lutfi, would you like to start on this one?
Sure. Yeah, I do think they've been very responsive, and it's great that they were able to get rid of the visibility. I think I would like to recommend that they work with staff on the rear facade in terms of the materiality. I mean, in their prior presentation, they had proposed brick, which I feel was more harmonious with the, forgetting about the building that juts out right next to them, all of the other buildings in the surrounding area. I think it worked better, and it worked better to make the back more cohesive. So that would be my recommendation.
Okay. Commissioner Jefferson.
I agree with my fellow Commissioners.
Okay. Commissioner Gustafson.
I'm fine with this as it is, and I just wanted to point out that I think this is an example of the process working at its best. You know, the applicant came to us, we commented, they may not love all of our comments, but they returned within 40 days, and they were responsive in every way. We had an architect who thought it through, came up with alternative ideas to what they produced previously, and got it to us fast. And I hope that we will return this to them equally fast. I'm okay with it just the way it is.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Commissioner Shamir Baron.
I agree completely.
Okay, Commissioner Holford Smith.
I agree with Commissioner Lutfi on the materiality of the back addition. I think the brick would be more harmonious. Otherwise, I think it's a very responsive proposal.
Okay. Commissioner Chapin.
Yes, I also agree with Commissioner Lutfi. I think they did a terrific job of revising it. It's great in all respects, except for that rear material, which I think in this case is just going to stand out particularly because it is visible and will be much more harmonious if it's brick or even working with the staff. And I think everything else is, you know, great about the proposal.
Commissioner Goldblum.
I agree that it's appropriate, and I think that the metal at the back is actually quite nice, and I like it. I think it's appropriate, which is more important than whether I like it or not. I think that in the context of the adjacent neighbor, which is very modern, I think it's an appropriate range of deviation from the norm. There's no question that the brick would be better, or not better, the brick would be more contextual, but I don't think that the way it's presented is inappropriate, and I want to thank the applicant for making the changes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Deventer.
I think it's appropriate as presented. It's a contemporary addition, and I think it shows that. I don't think it has to go any further.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chen.
I agree with all the comments, Michael, and as well as John Gustafson. I think it's appropriate and fine as is.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bland.
Well, big change in the massing, which was the big problem before. But I'm sort of in the camp of it would be better to be brick, because I think it's now metal, then brick, and then metal, which is a little odd. But because if it's near invisibility and the adjacency of this contemporary building, I don't think it's a disaster at all if it is metal. But I just suggest that is maybe working with staff, they might think about that. Otherwise, it's a big improvement from what we've seen before and quite an appropriate change.
Okay. All right, so I think we sort of have five for brick and five for it as-is, and I think I come down on the side of it as-is as well. And I think partly because it's obliquely visible and in the context of this modern addition and some variety, it's not a sort of a uniform context in this particular view. But I also think that historically, there have been variations in materials of rear yard additions. For example, wood tea porches versus brick additions versus ducco, and some of that variety, I think, is kind of the natural evolution of some of these rear yards, particularly where you don't have a very consistent row. So in this particular case, I would come down on the side of it being okay as-is, which I think puts us six. So Commissioner Gustafson, would you read the motion and we'll see where we are?
In the matter of LPC 20-10140, 163 Bond Street in the Borum Hill Historic District Extension, the application is to construct rear yard and rooftop additions. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Borum Hill Historic District Extension. I recommend approval noting that the construction of the proposed additions will not damage or destroy any significant architectural features, that the cumulative effect of the added volume of the proposed rooftop and rear yard additions will not overwhelm the building or the surrounding buildings, that the proposed rooftop addition will not be visible from public thoroughfares, and that only the rear facade of the proposed rear addition will be partially visible at an oblique angle when viewed from Wykoff Street, that the proposed rooftop addition will be set back from the front and rear facades, thereby helping to maintain a sense of the building's original massing, that the plane and fenestration pattern of the upper roof of the rear facade will remain intact, thereby preserving the relationship between this building and adjacent buildings in the row, that the proposed rear addition will not extend further into the rear yard than other buildings within the block, or diminish the central green space, that the design and materiality of the additions featuring standing seam metal cladding with metal windows and doors will be in keeping with the variety of treatments found in additions within the block, including the contemporary rear addition at the adjacent building, and that the work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the Borum Hill Historic District Extension.
Okay. Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Nay.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Deventer.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith.
Aye.
Okay, with 10 in favor and one opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And if the applicant does wish to think about that material, please continue to work with the staff and keep in mind other Commissioners' comments today.
Okay, we're going to move to the public hearing items. First one is item number one, LPC 21-04299, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 2573 lot 7, 1118 Lorimer Street in the Greenpoint Historic District. This is an Italian-eight-style rowhouse designed by E.S. Evans and built in 1874, and the application is to install storefront info.
Commissioners, the applicants have joined the hearing. You now have control of the presentation. Please state your name for the record, and you may begin. You now have control of the presentation. You just have to click on the screen that you see, and then you can advance the slides.
Oh. Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Good morning, Commissioners. How does that work? How do I, do I share my screens?
No, the screen that you see before you, you just need to click to advance the slides.
Okay, perfect. Perfect, thank you very much. So my name is Francois Leninger. I'm part of the design team responsible for the design we're presenting today. So just a little bit of context here, so this storefront that you're considering today is part of a broader renovation of the building that has been going on, interiors and exterior, all within, also the context of this very difficult time with COVID. The renovation started a few months before COVID and then went through the whole period, and this is obviously a bit significant also because it created a little bit of uncertainty on what will this retail be used for. Originally, when we started to design the project, we had, the client I had in mind, a neighborhood restaurant, and we established the basis of our design based on that assumption. Today, it's a little bit unclear, given the very difficult economic context. So we had to integrate to our design reflection some level of flexibility, if you will, in regards to the occupation, the future occupation of this space, and I'm going to talk about this a little bit further later on. So, oh, sorry, how do I go back?
You can use the arrow keys or the scroll wheel and the mouse to go back and forth.
Okay, great. So we started with the historical records, which in the case of this beautiful corner building, we have two photographs and obviously a somewhat limited understanding of the exact nature of the historical storefront due to the limited amount of viewpoints. That being said, we could, by studying carefully these records, we could understand a few very important things for our design. The first one is that none of the historical storefront remains today, and we're going to talk about this in the next couple of slides. But also that this historical storefront was very significant and integrated a number of characteristics that were of great historical quality and importance, and were very much the bedrock of the proposal that we are presenting today, which, given the absence of any remainder of this historical storefront, we would qualify as a sort of modern take on the historical storefront, but very much based on our understanding of what was there originally. So I will now, sorry, so today, the state of the storefront today is this. I will point here that we used two photographs that show two slightly different states of the current storefront. The one on the right is, we believe, a bit older. Both photographs are taken from, I believe, real estate listings that were available online. The one on the left is more recent. The only difference is that the doors, which are the same on both photographs, were repainted at the time, I believe, they put the building in the market. And so the left photograph shows very much the state of the storefront when it was acquired by our client. We, so this is the elevation of the current state of the storefront. We conducted a thorough study of the existing condition, made a few assumptions on the nature of the components responsible for the construction of this storefront, the major wood beam carrying the brick facade and supported by a series of cast-iron columns. And then we conducted a series of probes to verify these assumptions and verify if any of the historical remains. So to, just, I wanted to note here that I gathered all the probe photographs in one page for the sake of an easier and faster presentation, but all of these photographs plus some additional ones are available at the end of this presentation in a full page if we want to go back to any of them. So you can see here the poor state of the existing storefront from the inside and the outside. We believe that this renovation was made in the late 70s, I believe, and all of what we see here dates back from this period. The photograph on the bottom right here is the important one where we see the inside of the cavity of the current cornice over the storefront, and you can see the naked face of the wood beam and the first row of brick, proving that, and the sort of completely empty cavity here, proving that none of the historical cornice remains. We conducted a similar probe at the corner, and we can review that photograph that shows the exact same thing at the end if you want. So moving to a series of diagrams that explain our design, so based on the study of this historical heritage that has entirely disappeared, we proposed first to create a division into five base of the storefront on Noble. This division into five is directly inherited from the historical storefront. However, we propose an equal base, which is slightly different from what we can take from the historical record, even though we don't have a proper elevation that would show the exact proportion of the historical. It may have been exactly what remains today if they reproduced the proportions. Here, we decided to have five equal bases to somewhat respond to the orders on the upper floors of the building with this equal distance between the windows on the two floors above us with the four-base division, and then the same thing on the three windows at the roof level. And let's note here that there is no strict intention in this building in its historical setting to create an absolute symmetry and alignment between the different levels, most likely due to the fact that it turns the corner. And so there is not a very strict alignment between the five base of the storefront and the four base above, the same way there is not a strict alignment and symmetry between the four base and the three windows above. So that's the first and important move. And then moving to that diagram here, we locate two doors to access the retail, which is also inherited from the historical storefront, and we locate them similarly on bay two and four, which reproduces exactly what we had historically. And then we have this alternance between the bulkheads and transforms that reproduce is also a rhythm similar to the one historically present, the predominant cornice at the top of the building and a smaller one responding at the top of the storefront, which is also similar to the historical, although ours is flatter. And lastly, the directionality, we started, we wanted to introduce an architectural component based on molding thresholds, creating reveals that would somewhat create a subtle directionality to our composition, leading naturally to the corner and our storefront in an identical way as the historical one is turning the corner. So moving to that, the explanation of that element, we wanted to play with the molding, research standard profiles of wood molding, and created various combinations to finally select one. and created various combinations to finally select one that would be the basis of the design of each of the four columns, creating the division of our base. At the top here, you can see how the, we adopt the in-and-out sort of rhythm that is also directly inherited from the historical storefront with the two retail doors being recessed and the fixed windows being projected out using an interpretation of the shelf detail that we had historically in the storefront in a more modern way, as you're going to see in the next pages. And I wanted to also point out to this little subtlety that we use a sort of double mirroring, if you will, of the chamfer molding profile that we have here in the column to reproduce the exact same thing on the inside. So basically, one person facing the storefront on the outside will see a composition, and one person standing inside the retail facing out will see the exact same composition mirrored, which allows us to have a consistency of the detailing between the doors recessed and their relationship to the molding and the fixed windows projecting out and their relationship to the molding. This sort of level of sophistication of the detailing, if you will, is also our response to the great sophistication of the historical storefronts that are typical of this type of architecture. So here, we created a full-scale markup of the column to show the effects of these molding profiles. In sections, you can see here the section through the storefront with the fixed window projecting out, the small shelf detail and the recessed bulkhead. And here in plan, in more detail, how the recessed door and the projecting fixed window have the exact same relationship to the molding, creating this sort of reveal and deep shadow that's going to be the agent of what I described as the sort of directionality that we give to our storefront. This is the result in elevation. And in rendering here, I'm introducing here a couple more elements. We introduced some lighting over each of the entry doors. We assume that if the retail is to become one tenant, will have maybe one, this door is going to be the primary door for access of the retail. We still give ourselves the possibility that there may be two tenants, which would be identical to the original storefront. And then we will introduce the name of the retail on the glass, painted on the glass. And the material, the brass of the light fixtures will echo the material of the door handle that we create for each of these doors. You can see here in a bit more details, the contrast that we wanted to create between the natural wood of the glass framing and bulkhead was very important for us in creating the proper contrast between the columns responsible for the main rhythm and the bulkhead, that you can see here. And the last thing I wanted to point out is the existing cast iron column displayed in the corners in somewhat a very similar way as in the historical record. You have here proper detailed elevations and plans of the proposed design shown here in its relationship to the existing elements that we found and with proper dimensions. And we have here another view of the rendering. And after that, I have all the probe photos in enlarged versions, if you want. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And we do have some questions. Commissioner Goldblum?
Just for my own edification, how are you getting around the handicap requirement for the pull-side flat space?
Pull-side flat space?
When you have a door that is accessed by the public, my understanding, certainly incomplete, is that you need to have 18 inches to the pull side, that's coplanar with the door, and 12 inches to the push side if you have a closer. So that, what we usually see when we see storefronts is we usually see a three-foot door and then a side light or a double-three-foot door, so that space, that space to the side, to the handle side of the door is accommodated coplanar to the door itself. Here, your doors are recessed about a foot into these piers. And I'm just hoping you don't, you know, if I'm wrong, then I'm happy. But if I'm not wrong, then you're going to be coming back to us fairly soon with a totally different rhythm.
Well, yes, this is definitely something to be verified. I thought that was, that had been cleared, but I will, yes. Yes, this is definitely something that we need to verify.
Okay, other questions? I don't have any other questions at this moment. So why don't we turn to public testimony? And we may have more questions after that. I'm going to turn it over to Anthony Fabre, our Director of Intergovernmental and Community Affairs, who will walk us through the testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And as always, we will start with anyone who signed up in advance and then get to everyone else. All right, Anthony?
Thank you, Chair Carroll. We do have a couple of sign-ups. I'm going to begin with Sante Micali, and I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name. You should be in the meeting now. Just unmute your microphone and state your name for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, hi, good morning, Chair, Commissioner. My name is Sante Micheli. I'm Greenpoint resident. I'm also a member of the Landmarks Committee, Committee Board One. I'm not here, I just discovered early this morning, so I'm not representing officially Committee Board One. But I discovered this morning that this was presented here at LPC, so I believe it was probably appropriate to make some comments. Briefly, you know, we recommended as a landmark committee for an in-kind restoration of this storefront. And personally, I felt that it must have a Scandinavia vibe, this design. You know, for example, the wood is exposed, historically wood was always painted, both, you know, to protect from the environment, also to uniform a little bit with the architecture of the building. But anyhow, something is still missing, which is a very important element, and this is a very peculiar, very particular building because it sits in a corner inside a full historic block. And it's very typical of few buildings in the district that have this projecting window. And many applicants that come and they actually have restored and we propose this typology of storefront. And I'm a contemporary designer myself, so it's always a big debate when you have to make subjective decisions. And you may like a design, but this is one of the cases where you have to be a contextualist. And in that context, it feels an anomaly. It's difficult to see if you don't know the historic district, but when you know the historic district, when you have other reference, you know, they didn't even use prototypical reference, which we have plenty, not many because we have few, but plenty enough to have sufficient reference for this applicant. So this is another important element that I want to bring to your attention. And the volumetry, that is very important. And I don't know, they claimed that the door, the double door, were not original beyond repair. To me, it looked like the double door, they were actually original. The glass was removed and probably paneled with wood along the way. I don't know the state of the conservation, if they are beyond repair, but somehow there was a rhythm that right now is lost. And the door has even now element, this element of the handle with the brass. I don't know, it definitely feels an intrusion, it feels an anomaly. I know they tried to ever create a language and a vocabulary, but the building has plenty details already. You know, there was a canopy, there was a corners, the building is rich in detail. They, I believe, they didn't need to go and look for molding from a neighboring building. I don't think it was really in relation, you know, to what the project was calling for. And I really invite you, Commissioner, to really look at this. This is not about wanting to be purist, but it's about really to recognize that at some time, certain building is a very unique, isolated building that require an in-kind restoration, that is not very difficult to achieve.
Sante, if you could summarize your...
I believe that's what, I believe I said everything. So thank you again for your dedication and your attention.
Thank you. Okay, next up, I will bring in Mark Bench. Mark, you should be in the meeting.
Anthony, thank you. Good morning, Chair Carroll and Commissioners. This is Mark Bench, on behalf of the Victorian Society of New York. Founded in New York in 1966, the Victorian Society in America is dedicated to fostering the appreciation and preservation of our 19th and early 20th century heritage. The New York chapter promotes preservation of our historic districts, individual landmarks, interiors, and civic art. Victorian Society of New York thanks the applicants for providing modern photos showing that probes were done, and that, with the exception of the three historic cast columns and the transom windows over the storefront entrance, only fragments of original material remain intact. We also thank them for providing the historic photographs, photos which show that the display windows didn't have transoms. The Victorian Society of New York supports this proposal to rebuild the ground-floor storefronts. The work will eliminate egregiously ugly modern infill with a loss of minimal amount of historic material while maintaining the original five-bay division and restoring the transparency of the ground floor. Further, the design of the new storefront with wood bulkheads, wood and glass doors, large display windows, signage painted on one door, and painted wood sign band has been detailed in a modern manner, which will also recall historic storefront detailing. However, we have a couple of concerns with details that should be addressed. First, the painted wood storefront framing and oak bulkheads resting directly on the concrete curb will rot in a few years. They should be elevated on a base. Second, there are three historic cast iron columns. The applicant is proposing to move the one on the left side, shown on slide nine, to accommodate the new door in this bay. Cast iron is brittle and can crack very easily. There are no dimensions provided for these doors, but they appear to be quite wide as a new single-leaf door is going to be installed in each of the existing openings, which now has a pair of doors. The applicant should re-study the size of this door to allow the historic cast iron column to remain in place. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Our last sign-up is Kelly Carroll, and I will bring her in. Kelly, you should be in the meeting. Make sure you're not muted.
Good morning, Kelly Carroll, Historic Districts Council. HTC found the proposed new storefront to be an attractive contemporary intervention and an enormous improvement to the ground floor of this building. We had concern about the treatment of the window frame and the recessed bulkhead, which are proposed to be a spray-and-seal natural finish. Clear finishes on wooden storefronts in historic districts are a bit unusual. Perhaps it is better to paint the entire storefront as is typical for the material. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. That's it for our sign-ups, and I don't see any other attendees with their hands raised.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to turn back to the applicant and ask if you would like to address some of the issues that were raised in the testimony, in particular, the relocation of cast iron columns and the resulting proportions, the finish. And then the first speaker commented on the idea of an in-kind replacement. So maybe you could talk a little bit about the existing fabric versus the historic condition again in your response.
So, sorry, sir, do you want to note any other testimony that we received?
Sorry, yes, Rich, please.
We did receive the Community Board Resolution that did recommend approval. I just wanted to note that for the record.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Well, let me start with thanking everybody for this incredible dedication. You can really feel the passion for the historical Brooklyn. And I want to be clear that our small team, clients and designers, architects, we all are Brooklynites and we all share that passion. And for us, it was very much at the center of this project from the beginning to find, what I would say, the perfect equation between a modern look that was both, you know, desired as a sort of way to renew the image of this building, but also very much ingrained and based on the historical, as we could, as we would be allowed to understand it from the records and from our experience and knowledge about the architecture of this part of Brooklyn. It is very much of a puzzle for me, of a complex equation where you have to balance different stakes. And if we take, for example, the last comment about the painted versus unpainted wood, you can see when you look at our composition that painting the entirety of the facade with the paint color that we picked would make the whole composition much heavier, which is not necessarily, you know, an enormous issue, but would create a very different field and a very different sort of balance for our proposal. This is definitely something that we considered. This is also a comment and a reservation that we heard before from the members of the community, and also something that we expected because we know how untypical it is. And we were hoping that this sort of exception would be considered in that particular case because we think it makes a big difference for our design and especially the way these columns and this sort of molded reveal acts, specifically because of the difference of finishes. In terms of the question of the cast iron columns, this is also, you know, a sort of balancing act between trying to keep in place the cast iron columns, all of them. But if we were to do so, not being able to establish the sort of equal base that we explained at the beginning of this presentation. And so what we did, which was, you know, already quite a challenge, was to keep the second column within the envelope of one of our new cladding and to, but we were not able to do the same with the third one and proposed to move it inside the cladding. The first one, obviously at the corner, which for us was the most important one, is displayed at the corner the way it was historically. So, you know, I'm not sure how much further I need to go here. We very much... We, we very much tried to establish a balance, the best way we could possibly imagine, between the modern take and the historical here. And that implies, in my view, a level of adaptation from the historical. If you don't exactly reproduce it, then in some ways or another, you're gonna create some adaptations. In, regarding the points about the doors, these doors are A, not original doors, and B, in a very, very, very poor state. So, it is, it is a bit difficult for me to understand why they should be integrated to this new composition. We are trying to provide to this building a beautiful facade after it spent decades with a very poor storefront that was also falling apart. And these doors are now very much the result of years of being left without care and, and being in a very poor state today.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any final questions for the applicant? Okay, not seeing any questions, I'm going to start to unmute or request to unmute all of you. So, look for that message so that we can make a motion to close the hearing and begin our discussion. Okay, and Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
And Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. And I think we had a, you know, a very detailed presentation, a lot of interesting testimony and a response to that. So, let's go ahead and, and give our comments now. Commissioner Devonshire, would you like to start this one?
Sure. In, in general, I'm okay with this. I think it's a huge error to apply stain and clear finish to wood that's going to be exposed here, both from a performance point of view and, and from an aesthetic point of view. I'm, I'm, I have a little bit of misgiving about moving the cast iron column. I, I think that the testimony about that is correct. Nevertheless, I don't think it's a game changer for me. And thus, with my initial misgivings, I think I can approve this.
Okay, with a painted finish, okay. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I agree with the Michael's comments and also Michael Goldblum's comments about the door framing. It is, you know, I can approve it, but I think that it needs to work with staff about, you know, adjustment on, based on the comments. And obviously, it should be painted.
Okay, great. Commissioner Bland?
Yeah, a very detailed presentation of something that's very, fairly straightforward, but maybe overly thought, thought through. But nonetheless, I appreciate the, the thinking. From one Brooklyn guy to another whole Brooklyn team, I appreciate what's happening here. But I do think that Michael Goldblum's initial question is a kind of haunting the whole scheme because I can't imagine that we can put doors like this in. So, I don't know if this is working with staff or if it's coming back, but I'm sure it will be back, one way or the other. And whether we see it or not, or whether we can ask staff to, to review it or not is maybe a technical question that the chair should opine on. You know, this could have been looked at in a very historical way and probably come up with something that was very acceptable. But I can accept also this more contemporary and thoughtful take on, you know, a 19th century storefront. But I think that everybody's saying paint, and I personally, I have personal experience with this. I wanted a nice, beautiful teak, back when teak was consumable. Rear, rear series of French doors on, on my house. Well, within about a year and a half, they all got painted black because there was no way the teak, the teak was just failing and I was gonna have to be painting it, sealing it, you know, yearly or twice yearly. So I think they will be back. So the point here is that you have a system, an overall framing system and then an infill. And I think that's an interesting idea. And I think that, that idea is, is a good one. But I do think that you have to figure out another way of providing that duality without exposed wood because the UV will eat it, eat it to shreds. Otherwise, I think the door issue and the handicap issues there are significant enough to, I hope not kill the scheme. In other words, I hope there's room for those doors. There may not be. Anyway, that's enough to talk about. We may be seeing it again.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Latvy?
Hi, I'm gonna echo some of the sentiments of my colleagues. And I want to say that, though, before I start is that this is a terrific project overall. I, it needs, it needs, there are some areas where the applicant needs to pay attention. But, you know, the storefront had been modified significantly, wasn't contributing in any way to the district. And this new interpretation pays homage to what was there originally. But it, you know, it, it brings this into a contemporary arena, which seems very appropriate to me. And I think the, you know, the, the use of the indents and the reveals and the creation of shadows is quite elegant and it is harmonious. I, I haven't, Michael Goldblum did raise, you know, the big ele, what is now the big elephant in the room. And, and I agree, it has to be studied and hopefully it doesn't kill the project. I also agree that the wood should be painted. If you're, if the applicant's looking for some kind of contrast, maybe it can be painted another color. But, but, but I think the sophistication of the reveal will not be lost if it is painted one color. And I don't believe it'll be, it will be heavy. I also, you know, I like the signage, it's very understated. And Mark Bench did raise another issue that I, I don't know, and I'd like to hear from some of my colleagues. It may, it may be an issue is this, which is about the wood hitting, you know, the, the street and whether or not it will deteriorate and whether or not it needs to be elevated. I can't really speak to that, but I'm sure others can. And I, I don't have a problem with the removal of the third column. So, I think these things need to be addressed and, but I'm in favor of this project overall.
Okay, thank you. And in terms of the wood hitting the ground, I think we do typically see some sort of stone sill under it to prevent it from deteriorating at that point. So, that's something we can look at. And in terms of the, the big question in terms of the proportions of the doors, I think that should there be an approval today based on a certain set of proportions and details? And the applicant needs to revise it to provide a door with a side light. If the general proportions and details are in keeping with what's approved, that may be a staff amendment. If it changes that set of proportions radically, that could be a commission amendment. So, it, it really depends on what we need to do here. And while we're going around, I'm trying to look at the drawings to understand the dimensions in that, in those door bays. But why don't we move to Commissioner Jefferson, and I'll keep looking at that. Okay?
It, this is a very handsome facade, and I think it's quite well done. I do agree that the bulkheads should be either painted or made of a material that wouldn't fall apart in ten years. But, and I think if it's painted to match the gray, it'd just be framing the beautiful windows. So I, I, either way, it's fine with me. I think it's a, this is approvable by me. The issue I do have, I think they're gonna have a problem technically with the head, with the window head and the way it hits the molding. And the sealant pocket there might be an issue because it's only water could, the sealant fail, that's the end of that. So, it's approvable. And I, I, I love the door handles, I think they're wonderful. But let's see how they work. I think the handicap issue is a major one, but let's see how it works out.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, I, I really have nothing to add. I think the, the, the clear finish is, is an issue, otherwise I have nothing to add.
Okay, Commissioner Shamir Baron?
No, I, I think that there's something a little bit odd about this, this multiple columns or piers and the spaces between them. But I also can understand that there is an attempt here to, to interpret, or at least what we understand from the 40s photographs. And, I mean, there was something kind of, there was something understandable about the little vitrine boxes in the, in the historic condition that I, I think that they were trying to get it, but they didn't because they had to accommodate this other, two other openings and the contiguous space. So, I mean, I think they're juggling a lot of things and trying to, to do the right thing. And I think this is an interpretation and as such is appropriate, an interpretation of something historic when, when what was here earlier was not contributing in a positive way to the building. So, I can approve it as it's presented with, with some, a little bit of hesitation. And I do think, though, that the points that Michael Goldblum raised about the accessibility are, are gonna have them reconsider a number of these, you know, the dimensions of the opening, at least. So, but I can approve it as it is.
Okay. And I did just look at the drawings and there, those openings where the, well, the doors are currently three foot six doors. So I do think there's a little wiggle room within that opening to address it if they need a door and a side light. But it may, it may shift the proportions. Commissioner Holford Smith?
I think this is an interesting interpretation of the historic storefront. And in general, I find it acceptable. I definitely share Commissioner Jefferson's concern about the condition where the cornice cuts in and the window head sticks out. But I think that could be problematic, but that's a detail. Hopefully that they could work out with staff. And obviously, they have to address the ADA accessibility. But other than that, I think I can find it appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
I share the concerns of other commissioners about the cornice and also the, just the painting, the need to paint the wood that was not planned to be painted. I think they could address the issue of, you know, it appearing too heavy by just using a different color of paint similar to what it would appear as if it were natural wood. So, in general, though, I think it's an interesting proposal. I think the modern design is appropriate here. And I can approve it in general and hope that they can successfully navigate the issues and putting the accessibility issues and work with the staff on it to address the issues other commissioners have raised.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Yeah, I, I, it's, it's interesting how, I think most people seem to be agreeing, and I certainly agree with that position, that aesthetically, this is perfectly fine. And that our focus has been on issues of buildability and durability. And I think that that's, it's important to note, I mean, for myself, it, it's a reminder that, that appropriateness isn't just about the aesthetics. It's also about the materiality and the durability and the appropriateness of putting in a, an installation that it has a construction quality that is commensurate with the historic district and the building. And to that extent, whether it's the exposed wood, the, the wood headers that are gonna get wet, the, you know, the ADA compliance, I would add to that not short list, good luck getting a wood door with a one and a half inch frame that'll, that'll last more than a week. And you're, the very beautiful kind of molding profiles that are, that are making up these green piers are made out of wood. And they too are sitting on this concrete plinth, sucking up water and salt. So I think that there are significant buildability issues that are gonna send the applicant back to revise things. And I think it's appropriate that we are considering those things as part of our review.
Okay. All right. So I think, I think where we are is a approval with modifications for the staff to work with the applicant on a painted finish. The details related to durability and buildability. So the, the framing thickness, the head and the, and the sill. And, and then most importantly, the confirming the ADA requirements and looking carefully with the staff at the proportional changes resulting from that. And that may or may not require a commission amendment depending on the level of change that's needed. So why don't I go ahead and make a motion? And then the applicants can go ahead and begin that work and, and they'll come back to us if need be. So, here we go. In the matter of docket number 21-042991118, Lorimer Street in the Greenpoint Historic District, an Italianate-style rowhouse designed by E.S. Evans and built in 1874. This is an application to install storefront infill. And I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Greenpoint Historic District. And I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the building historically had a projecting storefront which has been reclad and modified over time and that the installation of the proposed storefront infill will return a higher level of transparency to the base of the building and eliminate modifications that detract from the building's special architectural and historic character. The remaining historic features, including the Italianate-style doors and transoms, are in deteriorated condition and no longer part of a coherent design. And therefore, their removal will not eliminate significant intact historic fabric. But the cast, historic cast iron piers, the interior cast iron piers will be salvaged and relocated and the corner pier will be visible through the window. And that the proposal includes a stepped profiled cornice and profiled wood trim, which will evoke the depth and articulation of these aspects of the historic storefront while utilizing a contemporary design approach. That the open glazed corner will recall this feature of the historic storefront and that the use of inset bulkheads will recall the original storefront projection. And that the large display windows and transoms are in keeping with prototypes found in historic storefronts in this district. However, I find that the stained wood bulkheads and framing are an atypical finish that is not consistent with historic painted storefronts. And that, that the design lacks detail work to ensure the durability and buildability and ensure that it meets ADA requirements. So therefore, I recommend that the storefronts have a painted finish, working in consultation with the staff, and that the applicant continue to study the details of the framing, the sill and the head as well as the proportions to address the issues of durability and ADA requirements. Okay, and so with that, Commissioner Devonshire, would you second that motion?
I second it.
Okay, Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Latvy?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with 11 in favor and none opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, that's been moved and... Okay, so that's been moved and please continue to work with the staff on these important details and we'll move to the next item.
The next item is public carrying item number two, LPC twenty-one dash zero five one seven zero. Application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, block nineteen sixty-one, lot fifty-one, four-ten to four-twelve Waverly Avenue in the Clinton Hill Historic District. This is a pair of neo-grec style carriage houses designed by C. Cameron and built in eighteen seventy-nine. The application is to construct a rooftop addition and alter the front and rear facades.
And Commissioners, the applicant has joined the hearing. Please remember to unmute yourself. You now have control of the presentation. You can just click on the screen to advance and you may begin.
Hi, my name is Mary Kay Judy. I'm a preservation consultant and the application today is to reissue a certificate of appropriateness. The project involves two carriage houses in the Clinton Hill Historic District that were combined previously and turned into a single family home. And is the owner in twenty thirteen commissioned David Ajay Associates to design a rooftop addition and interior renovation. Unfortunately, due to extenuating circumstances, the permit renewal was overlooked in June, I'm sorry, January of twenty fourteen. So while the project scope has not changed, uh, the project is in construction and is approximately seventy-five percent complete. We are here to, uh, to present again, to have the permit reissued. We did present at the community board, uh, in January and they had approved the project to continue. So with that, I'd just like to turn it over to Joe Frenchina, David Ajay.
And Joe, if you could just unmute yourself? I've asked you to unmute if you can just accept that?
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, as, as Mary Kay had, had described you, and I'm sorry, uh, good morning Commissioners. Thank you for taking the time out to revisit this application. As mentioned, this is a pair of carriage houses in the Clinton Hill Historic District. And, um, what we're doing here is we're combining the two and adding a, uh, story on top of the roof, at the same time trying to not impact the historic nature of this carriage house street in the Clinton Hill Historic District. So.
So you just need to click on the slide and there you go.
There we go. Okay. So you can see this is, uh, where we are today and, um, as the carriage house exists currently, we're, as Mary Kay kind of described, we're about seventy-five percent done. We've been working on this project on and off for the past, um, seven, eight years. The, the contractor, um, initial contractor had a dispute with the client and was kind of removed from the job. And we've spent some time looking for a new contractor, which delayed the project and kind of like off, offset the, um, the timing of this. And so it's been quite an interesting long time. But going back to the original presentation, um, what we were looking at is just the, the types of carriage openings on this street. And you can see in the center here, the center two, we have, what we were left with back in two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen as the existing openings. So we looked to kind of revisit that. These are the historic images, one from, on the left from nineteen forty and then one from nineteen eighty. And the one from nineteen eighty is really much, pretty much what we're, what we've kind of found on site, except the paint had been stripped at the time we, we kind of came across the project. They could see the carriage doors were, were missing. The historic doors were still in place and the windows were largely removed. So this is the historic image and then the new built kind of unit next door. So what we were proposing in the initial kind of iteration is that we kind of replace the carriage, uh, door openings with a painted metal and glass, um, set of doors on each carriage house opening and then retaining the existing doors and then basically replacing all the windows with new wood and glass windows. The addition on the building, really we're looking at basically putting an addition on that would have no, no visual impact to the street. And, you know, we kind of designed it so you can kind of keep it below the sightlines from wherever you're looking at, except there's one image, you know, that's down the street through a park fence that you can potentially see a corner of this. And so this is the existing image of the, the front of the carriage house as it existed back in two thousand and twelve. And what we're looking to do is, you could see, put this rooftop addition on and then have replaced these doors and clean and point the facades and replace where needed any existing bluestone lintels or, um, or, uh, uh, silber. Uh, this is the existing state as we found it in two thousand and twelve of the rear yard. And we're looking to replace the damaged piers, re-point the brick and then replace windows and, and doors. And this is where we are currently. Basically, we're in the midst of repairing the cornice. The upper windows have been placed and the ground floor, we're having doors that open out to the rear yard. And here you could see the existing, uh, rear elevation. And then the new rear elevation where the ground floor doors and windows became basically doors opening out to the rear yard and then a terrace up for the, the bedroom addition above on the third floor. And how it looks, how it would be proposed to look from the rear yard. And so this is the addition as it sits on top of the, the building and the view from looking into the, the rear yard. This is a view from Clinton Avenue looking between buildings. This is what you can see of the rear extension. So you're seeing this dotted red line of the projected extension. And these, the other materials that we're thinking that are on top of the roof. So basically, simply an oak skin or a, um, a cementitious, uh, cement panel roof. And this is where we currently are at. This is the addition already built. We're doing some remedial work to find out where some leaks are through the, the roof that had been left there for years. This dotted red line just shows a, a temporary shed that we removed once the building is complete. It's how the extension looks on top of the existing structure from the, from Waverly and then from the rear yard. And this is just showing how you would see the extension. So from, this is what we showed back in two thousand and thirteen and this is how it looks today. And so what you're seeing down the street is, all you're seeing is the temporary shed that we have on top of the roof. The temporary shed is just an enclosure to keep the conditions inside the house, uh, maintained while the construction's going on and it'll be removed, as I said. And this is also looking down the street. So you can see from Green Street, the corner of Green and, and Waverly, all you see is the shed basically popping out on this side. And this is just a blow up of that, that image. And then this is the place where you actually can see the extension. So you're on Green Street, looking through the, the playground of the, the school across the street and you can see the addition picking up over the, the top of the building. And this is going back to the, the, um, this, the view from Clinton Avenue looking at our back facade. So basically, this is what we originally proposed and this is actually how it's actually being constructed. So it's a bit smaller than we originally thought. This is what you're seeing in reality. And thank you very much for your attention.
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? So this is a, a proposal for, uh, renewal, for a permit that, uh, approval that we issued and has since expired and the work is seventy-five percent complete. So in fact, um, it's interesting to see that the addition is a little bit smaller than the renderings had originally indicated from that view. All right. If there are, um, no other ques- no questions, why don't we move to public testimony and see if we have anyone here who would like to speak? If you're in the meeting and would like to speak, raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And I will turn it over to Anthony Fabre to walk us through the testimony.
Thank you. We do have two people who have signed up. First, I will bring in Kelly Carroll. Kelly, uh, you should be in the meeting now.
Kelly Carroll, Historic Districts Council. Although most of this project was previously approved under a separate CVA, HDC asks Commissioners to revisit the rear facade's window configuration. This rear facade is unusual because it does not read as secondary. It is designed, including the presence of a cornice. HDC found the single, single pane fenestration to be inappropriate here and we asked for the introduction of some multi-light windows that would better relate to the style and age of this carriage house and historic district. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I will bring in Mark Bench. And Mark, you should be in the meeting now.
Thank you, Anthony. This is Mark Bench for, on behalf of the Victorian Society of New York. The Victorian Society of New York suggests that the rooftop addition of the application is appropriate to the buildings and historic district as it will not be visible in relation to the front facade and is either only minimally visible between buildings from the back or from a significant distance through a playground. In addition, as it has been at least partly constructed based on an earlier permit, it would be unreasonable to rethink this approval. We would have objected to the removal of the decorative brick spandles below the rear windows, however, that work has also been completed pursuant to the earlier permit. However, we urge the commission to reconsider the early approval for the former carriage house doors at the front facade. This work has not been undertaken and we feel that the earlier doc, uh, the earlier approved design is sharply out of character with these carriage houses. It's reasonable in a residential conversion to find an alternate to the solid historic carriage doors, beautiful as they were. But new infill should be comp- should be a compromise between glazed and a solid material that better recalls the historic design, character and function of these buildings and their large carriage openings. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for signups, but I do see, um, Sante Michele, who has raised his hand. So bring him in. You should be in the meeting now. You just have to unmute yourself if you're trying to testify. Okay. Perhaps he is just, um, he was just there from the last item. So I will remove him. Okay. I think that's it for testimony.
Okay, thank you. And Rich, do we have any additional written testimony?
We do have an email from the community board. They recommend that approval.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioners, any final questions? All right. And I'd like to ask the applicant if they'd like to respond to the public testimony, some of the comments, um, some of the aspects of the work that haven't been completed.
I think from our point of view, um, we've acknowledged that the historic building had a particular, um, scale and grain that was appropriate to the time that it existed in. And we're just asking that, at least from the Waverly side, that the historic doors are, are long gone, that, uh, it would be, um, allowed to consider the, the new function of this building and, and just appreciate, you know, that this is becoming a living space for somebody and, and having opaque doors or even, uh, replications of the existing doors as, as quasi-transparent. I think David Ajay's interpretation of what a new carriage door could be is actually, you know, quite interesting and, and compelling. Regarding the, the rear windows, we, we find that the rear facade, um, has minimal impact to the, the character of Clinton Avenue and is not visible, the windows themselves on that street. And, um, to replicate windows that didn't exist as we understand in that, that, um, that we could find historically, just doesn't seem appropriate for us at the moment. But we can understand if you guys want to work with us, you know, we, listen.
Okay, thank you. All right. So if we have no further questions, Commissioners, I'm going to start to unmute you all or request to unmute you so that we can close the hearing and begin our discussion. So Commissioner Lutfi, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
And Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. So we'll begin our discussion and as we've all stated that, um, this is something the commission approved, um, in recent history and I'll give you that date right now, actually. It was approved in twenty fourteen. So many of us were here at that time. I was not on the commission at that time. And, um, and I think at that time with the respect to the doors, the, the commission, I think in sort of a tradition of allowing flexibility at carriage house doors because the carriage house doors were often open, the commission has at, at, at other carriage houses allowed for, um, more open and transparent infill to sort of evoke that. So I, I think that was the finding behind that at the time. And at the rear, the, the visibility was seen as, um, somewhat minimal and not detracting from the architectural character. So just in terms of context, I think that was, was behind the findings from the twenty fourteen approval. But as, uh, everyone has noted, this is a new application today and we're, and we can look at the work to the extent that it's not completed. So, um, why don't we go ahead and start? Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you like to start this one?
Sure, thank you. I think that the rooftop addition is, um, not visible and appropriate as, as previously approved, I guess, and, um, and presented. I, I understand the concerns about the windows in the rear as well as the doors in the front. But, but I, I think that the corbling and the, um, kind of very heavy and deep reveal, both on the, on the, on the rear and also in the front of those kind of piers set back from the, from, from the other, um, base of brick, it, it's so strong that the windows in the configurations and the doors, um, proposed don't detract from that. I mean, you still read these buildings, both of this building, this, um, twin in, in its, you know, according to sort of its original character. I don't think that it's undermined by these windows. And so I can approve it as it's been presented.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith?
She just signed off, uh.
Okay. Okay, great. Commissioner Chapin?
Uh, I think, uh, yeah, I can, I can approve it as presented.
Okay. Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree. You know, it's funny, I was thinking about this application a few weeks ago. We were looking at another rooftop carriage house with a black metal rooftop. And I was, I searched for it, I couldn't find it. I couldn't find it on David Ajay's website. I couldn't find it online. I was like, did I make that up? Did I, did I forget? But I'm glad I didn't. I think it was a good project then and I think it's a, a good project now and I think it's approvable as drawn, uh, and I can't wait to see it done.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Devonshire?
I think this is quite appropriate. Thanks.
Commissioner Chen?
I agree, it's appropriate.
Commissioner Bland?
I remember with great excitement when this came before.
I remember with great excitement when this came before us. David Ajay, at this point, was just coming into world fame. And it was exciting to have him and his firm working on a relatively small project here in Brooklyn. And I'm sorry to hear about the troubles along the way of getting it done. But I think what we approved then is still the right approach. I go with the Ajay approach to the, the doors. I think that's perfectly wonderful, as a matter of fact, as a contemporary riff on, on the original doors. And I think the windows in the back are fine, fine generally, but fine also because they're minimally visible. Anyway, I think it's very exciting and I wish them all the best to finish, finish up.
Okay, great. Commissioner Luttrell?
I think it's very appropriate.
Okay, Commissioner Jefferson?
I think it's appropriate.
And Commissioner Gustafson?
Appropriate as is.
Okay, and Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you make the motion?
Yes, of course. In the matter of LPC 2105170410412, Waverly Avenue, Clinton Hill Historic District, a pair of Neo-Grec style carriage houses designed by C. Cameron and built in 1879. The application is to construct a rooftop addition and alter the front and rear facades. I note that the building's style, the materials and details of the buildings are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Clinton Hill Historic District. I further note that the work was approved pursuant to certificate of appropriateness 156407, issued in April 14, 2014, which has since expired and that the construction is approximately fifty percent complete. I recommend approval, finding that the historically, historical carriage houses were altered to accommodate new uses, including substantial additions and modifications to their roof lines. And the proposed alterations are in keeping with that tradition. But the rooftop addition will not be visible directly over the front facade and will only be visible through chain link fences at a distance on Green Avenue and from the rear through a gap between two buildings on Clinton Avenue. Emassing the scale of the addition will not overwhelm the carriage houses, that the addition will be sloped and finished with a dark GFRC panel skin roofing and seen only at a distance and in the context of other rooftop structures and side facades within the block and therefore will blend with its surrounding context. That the removal of the existing infill in the large centered door bays will not eliminate any historic fabric. That installing large glass doors and large fixed window in these openings will recall the historic character of the buildings at carriage houses as the central bay doors would have been open much of the time during office operation. That the installation of single pane windows and lowering window sills to create doors on the rear facades will be visible only from a gap in the street wall, street wall at Clinton Avenue and will not call undue attention to the windows. And this proposed work will not detract from the special historic and architectural character of the buildings or the historic district.
Thank you. Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay. Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron? So I can repeat that?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Luttrell?
Aye.
Okay, with ten in favor, and none opposed, and one not present, the motion carries.
Okay, so that's approved. Thank you. And good luck completing the project. We'll move to the next item.
Next item is number three, LPC 21-03065, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 2101, lot 7505, 256 Cumberland Street in the Fort Greene Historic District. This is an Italianate-style rowhouse built in the mid-1860s. The application is to combine masonry openings at the rear.
And commissioners, the applicants have joined the hearing. You may unmute yourself and state your name for the record. And you now have control of the presentation. You may begin. So if you could just please unmute yourself and turn on your camera.
Hello? Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please state your name and go ahead.
All right, my name is Jean-Luc Torchon. I'm the designer for this project. I'm having a hard time controlling the screen. Sorry, one second. There you go. Okay, so as the splash page mentioned, the project is at 256 Cumberland. The building represented in gray here on this plot plan is part of a pair of townhouses, these two here. It's abutted on the south by a larger six-story apartment building. And on the other side of the pair, over here, starting here, are two smaller wood-framed townhomes and similar-scale breakdown homes beyond. In about 2012, the building underwent renovation by a different outfit where it was transformed into a three-family condominium building. The configuration was set up with a duplex unit at the bottom and a floor-through unit for the third floor and fourth floor each. As part of this renovation, there was a new three-story extension built that also, that provided a terrace to the fourth floor as well as a steel balcony system to the south of that extension. My client owns the top floor only and the terrace and is proposing to make some changes to two of the three rear facade windows. Here's some context. As you see here, the larger apartment building to the south of the building, this is our building here and its sister building next to it, and a row of smaller-scale townhouses beyond. There is no visibility of the rear facade from any public thoroughfare surrounding this block. And we should go through some more context. This is a view looking to the south. You get a better sense of the donut from this angle and the scale of the two, the pair of townhouses that really, as it relates to the apartment building and its neighbors to the north. And a view from the rear here. At the street level, on the upper right, we see our building here tucked in the shadow of this larger building and the, uh, its sister building and the smaller-scale townhouses beyond. As I mentioned before, my client owns the top floor only and is proposing to do some work in the rear facade, which we'll take a look at now. Here are some existing conditions taken from the rear yard of the building, looking back. This is the recently-built three-story extension and steel balcony system that was built in 2012. The original rear facade of the building was completely parched in concrete and some new, more modern window openings were added to the bottom three and the top floors. And on the top middle, you see some of the neighboring buildings to the north. On the south, it's somewhat visible on the bottom right. The larger townhouse building extends pretty far into the rear yard. Our proposed work will be at the top floor for the two window openings that are directly adjacent to the terrace at the roof of the extension. Here is a more detailed view of this terrace. As you can see, the existing parging around the rear facade and the brownstone lintels over each window opening. Our little bit of context and floor plan. So the bottom floor plan shows the existing conditions and what we plan to do. Essentially, the client is looking to expand the kitchen of this apartment and also bringing a little bit more light. As you can tell from the aerial photo, it was pretty much in the shadow of this larger building. And it's a little bit deprived of light, so that's a little bit of our motivation for doing this work. We are proposing to remove the center pier between the two windows to unify the masonry opening into one larger one and maintain the two perimeters of the masonry openings intact. We would add a window and door glazing unit, which would include a glass door that's similar to what's currently existing and a glazing unit to the north of it. Here's an elevation of the pair of buildings. The, the neighboring building hasn't gone, undergone any renovation for quite a while, as far as I can tell. This building was modified, as I mentioned before, with a new extension balcony and steel balcony and guardrail and some modern openings to access those balconies. Our proposal is shown here, which is to basically unify the two window openings into a door and glazing unit. It's shown here. More detailed view of it shown here. So the bottom shows the existing conditions. And this rendering essentially shows what we're planning to do. We will match the existing brownstone lintel and, oh, that's already existing throughout the rear facade of this building and match the aluminum-clad units to the ones that are also already in the building. We have, and lastly, some construction details of how we're planning to execute this. At the head of the window, we will have a concealed steel lintel and a brownstone expression of the lintel to match the others applied to the brick masonry. And at the sill, we are planning to use the, to match the existing cast iron, I'm sorry, cast concrete sills. And it will be concealed underneath the pavers of the deck since it will go below level, ground level. So when we factor in the lack of visibility from public thoroughfare, the fact that our building is part of two buildings that minimally correlate with one another, we feel like the proposed addition is in keeping with the existing language of the building and shouldn't be a detriment to this building's contribution to the overall district at large. And that's the presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Any questions? Okay, not seeing any questions now. Why don't we move to public testimony? And we may have questions after that. So if you're in the meeting and would like to speak, please raise your virtual hands. We can identify you. And I'll turn it over to Anthony Fabre to walk us through the testimony.
Thank you, Chair. We do have a sign up, and that is Kelly Carroll. And I will bring her into the meeting. You should be in the meeting, Kelly.
Thank you. Kelly Carroll, Historic Districts Council. This application presents an interesting problem because it is both modest, yet violates the seemingly sacrosanct LPC tradition of retaining an intact fenestration pattern on the top floor of a rowhouse. As a compromise, maybe instead of enlarging the opening altogether, the window sill could be lowered to the floor to enlarge the opening. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. We don't have anyone else who's raised their hand to testify.
Okay, thank you. And Rich, did we receive any written testimony?
We did receive an email from the community board and they recommended approval.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'd like to turn back to the applicant and see if you would like to respond to the testimony. Again, maybe if we go to the, the photograph that shows the view of it from within the rear yard to provide the context, right, to, and talk about your, again, your analysis about the relationship between these two buildings and, and the rest of the block.
Yes, sure. The, I do understand the importance of the top floor windows generally in townhouses, especially when repeated over a string of several townhomes. In this case, we felt like the building was part of a pair. It is significantly overshadowed on the south side by a larger building. And the correlation with its sister building has been severed when the new, modern extension and balcony systems were added. In this particular case, the, the fact that the building is separated into different apartments and my client only owning the top floor, there, there, we felt like there was an appropriate addition to, or appropriate modification to the rear facade, since it didn't really break an established pattern over the, the top floor of, of the two sister buildings.
Okay, thank you. All right, and we do have another question. Commissioner Jefferson, please go ahead.
Yes. When the certificate of appropriateness was granted in March 21st, 2012, was that window, that door part of the original fabric or was it added at that time? The, the, the door on the, on the fourth floor?
I, I, I don't have the records from LPC, but from the available information I could find publicly, it seems like they were added at that time.
At that time. Thank you.
Okay, other questions? All right. Okay, not seeing any other questions. I'm going to start to unmute or request to unmute all of you so that we can make a motion to close the hearing and begin our discussion. So Commissioner Devonshire, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
And Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. So I think we'll go ahead and begin our discussion. Commissioner Jefferson, would you like to start this one?
Well, this, this is a tough one for me, but I, I, I believe in the rule. And the rules are that the fourth floor should show the fabric of the building. And when through this process once before, and we agreed to put this window, this door in, and now they're going to change it again. So I am being conservative. It should stay as is. And I got a recommendation from some other sources that maybe the original window should be lowered, perhaps. I could buy into that. So I, I, I don't think we should enlarge it horizontally.
Okay, and one thing I would just say is that, you know, when we look at things, there is no rule, per se. We do think about precedent a lot. And certainly, we have set up policies. And so, and one of those policies has been to retain the top four floor fenestration pattern in that it retains historic fabric proportions and, and also that it, in a, in a long row, can serve as the kind of reminder that this is a continuous row and, and allow that legibility of that pattern. So that's the, sort of the standard that we apply typically, but it's not a rule. And it doesn't mean that in some cases you can find that there isn't enough of a row or that relationship is altered in other ways, which is the, the case the applicant was making today. So, you know, just, you should feel that you are within your right to evaluate you know, just you should feel that you are within your rights to evaluate that those questions, that precedent or the standards at any time, given the certain circumstances before you. Um, so just to clarify that, I think that probably doesn't change the opinion though. So Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, I I think um, I guess I'm I'm within my rights then to say that uh um, I I I don't want to combine the two masonry openings at the top floor. Um, so not appropriate.
Okay, Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yeah, I think I'm, I agree with uh Commissioner Gustafson. I think we should preserve a little bit more of the top floor.
Okay, Commissioner Chapin?
Uh, actually, I, you know, strongly support preservation of the top floor. I think in this instance, because it's at the end next to this larger building and uh there's not that much sense of the of a row, there's another building here that is like a pair, but um, I feel that it is not as critical in this particular instance, so I could support it as presented.
Okay, Commissioner Goldblum? Oh, is he Commissioner Goldblum? Maybe he stepped away. All right, Commissioner Devonshire?
I'm not in favor of uh combining them. I think this uh this building has suffered enough.
Okay. Commissioner Chen?
He may have stepped away too, Sarah.
Oh, he's back. Commissioner Chen, I I don't know if you were here for the whole thing.
I was uh getting ready for downstairs, so I heard it. I had no problem with it. And I'm gonna step off.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Commissioner Bland?
Yeah, I never bought into that sacrosanct rule totally. I'm glad uh Sarah that you clarified that it was not actually sacrosanct. It's just sort of something that we talk about. And I think in this case, uh, the buildings have changed enough over time that preserving that um that top floor is not so important once this big addition has L has been put on the back of the building and so forth. Um, so I'm okay with uh with with um enlarging um the windows as as shown. So I'm okay as as it's um.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Letty?
Um, I I agree that the building has been modified quite a bit. That said, I feel as though in terms of what's there now, um, this doesn't really fit that well. And I can appreciate the applicant's desire to get more light in. But but what I might recommend is that the window actually be pulled up a bit so that there's some brick there at the base that relates to what's um on either side and also below. And potentially even putting a little brick between the uh between the door and the window, although I could, I I could approve it with just, you know, that that raising.
Okay.
And I think it would work better.
Okay. And Commissioner, I don't know, Commissioner Goldblum, I think is still not with us. So where we are on this is we um don't have, while we have some support, we don't have enough to support it in this case. Um, and we actually um, I think are not even at enough votes to deny it. So what I think we'll do is we'll take no action and um some compromises have been suggested by two of our commissioners and in the testimony. So maybe um you can continue to work with the staff and think about a way that the window opening could be modified um and still respect some of the sort of proportional and size um ratios that is typical of rear facades. Um, and then perhaps there would be six to support, six commissioners who would support some modification. So why don't you, we'll take no action and continue to work with the staff on on um this proposal. Thank you. And we'll move to the next item now.
The next item is number four, LPC twenty one dash zero three four nine two. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Bro of Manhattan Block five seventy two Lyte, sixty six West Ninth Street, the Greenwich Village Historic District. A Renaissance revival style apartment building designed by Schneider and Herter and built in nineteen hundred. And the application is to alter the areaway, replace a stoop and install a barrier free access lift.
And Commissioners, the applicant has joined the hearing. Uh, you now have control of the presentation. Um, just state your name for the record and you may begin.
Hello, my name is Richard Untina. And I'm with EDG.
Okay.
All right.
Please go ahead and begin your presentation.
Okeydoke. Um, do I just push the forward arrow?
You just, you just click on the screen and then you can advance the slides.
Oh, gotcha. Thank you. All right. My apologies. All right. Thank you for taking the time. Um, this project, whoops, I hit it far too many times. Bear with me for a moment. All right. Uh, this project is at sixty six West Ninth Street at Sixth Avenue on the corner. Uh, historical building built in nineteen hundred by Sch- um Schneider and Herter. And our project uh is primarily dealing with the retail space at the corner, which also has a secondary entry at the Ninth Street side. Um, this particular image here, it's a historical photo. There's a blow up on the on the right hand side. Our project, you can see here, can everybody see the cursor? It's right here on Ninth Street, and then there's a blow up right here. Our project in particular deals with the space just behind the the colonnade here. Um, these four bays on the corner. Uh, this particular photo was taken in sixty five, sixty six by John Barrington Baylin. And you can see just off in the distance, um, the stoop in question where the the ADA lift we're proposing and and stair reconfiguration, you can see some uh extent pipe rail and then some awnings above the windows. Um, this is just a planned view. And so this corner lot retail A is the uh retail spacing question and the scope of work is is dashed here. It is um bounded by a retail space to the east retail B and then a retailer on the Sixth Avenue side down below retail C. Uh, I've set up a few images just to show some context. This again is the scope of work which is dashed in white off of Ninth Street here. Um, this is the the colonnade I mentioned, and so this would be the scope of work looking directly at the building. This is looking the other way. Again, that's the scope of work that we're we're interested in. There's the stoop with the the handrail. And so what we wanted to do was provide access, ADA access to this space where there currently isn't any. And we looked at a few explorations around this site to see this sort of appropriateness of how we could achieve that effectively without creating too much you know, confusion or conflict. We looked at the uh the Sixth Avenue side where the retail C space was. Um, you can see the the front entry, the swooping wall here, but down below, um, there's an egress that comes out for the retailer and then retail C is down here below. So we couldn't really put a lift or a ramp or anything on this side just because it would impact a little bit too much for both that egress and that retailer. Um, we also looked at potentially creating a lift for the the corner stoop as well. But that that created some some issues for turnaround and and things like that, which I'll put it to in a later slide. This again is some close ups of the stoop, um where it shows the existing diamond plate on the concrete treads. Here's that pipe rail. There is the corner stoop beyond with these kind of curving cheek walls. Um, and this is just a shot at that side entry where there's a a two inch elevation change, uh, a smaller step at the top right here, and then four additional steps um leading to a sidewalk. And thi- this image on the left, you can see this this stoop actually aligns with the entry for the main building with the columns um just to the left there. We looked at potentially creating an opportunity where there's a lift at the corner. But again, there would be a lot of impact at that entry, just given the the turnaround requirements for ADA and so forth. So it really led to this uh side entry made the most sense to influence something. Um, and so we looked at a couple of options, option one and two, where we would put that lift. Two being bringing uh something to the corner entry, which really didn't work because the turnaround and also just the sort of invasive nature of what that might cause for that stair. And then the second lift of just bringing a lift to that existing stair. Uh, we looked at that option as well. And what that did was create a a little bit of a problem, just given the nature of the stairs here. You need a proper landing. And then that would really cleave off that last stair and you really wouldn't be able to have a workable stair anymore if you just had a lift sidling up against the existing stair. And so what we did was to look at um repositioning the stair such that it ran, pardon me, just clicking on the arrows here a little too hastily. My apologies. Um, what we did was to run the stair parallel to the building and then create a continuous uh landing that came right off the finished floor for an ADA turnaround, thereby retaining both the stair and then also being able to also put in a lift for ADA access. And this is just a planned view of that. So this is the new landing. Again, the the old encroachment line is here. Um, this this line, the smaller line indicates the uh this stair where it was. And so we're actually pushing the landing proposition back a little bit. And then these are the six stairs that come down and then the landing pad would land down here. And then this is an elevation of that. So this new sort of low cheek wall coming down and then the guardrail following that geometry. And then you can see the the ADA lift beyond. And I'm just going to talk about a little bit about this railing and how we we sort of derived it and that some of the direction we're working with LPC, just looking at some of the extent geometries and metalwork on the building itself. As you can see here, there's some um filigree at the corner entry and then on balconies that that face Sixth Avenue. And then further down the block at forty three and sixteen West Ninth, you can see some decorative iron work in a similar vein down the block. And so we thought that might be nice to sort of implement something a little lighter, a little more decorative instead of just putting back the pipe rail, which this this shows the existing conditions here and implement something that looked more. And I'm just trying to enhance the slide here, just a second. Whoops. It's a sensitive mousepad. My apologies. So it looks something a little bit more like this. So this is the existing. And then that would be the proposed. So keeping the coloration of the building looking to echo some of these curved walls that are adjacent to this condition, following that down enough to allow this for access and then implementing this more and more filigreed railing. And then keeping the lift itself a sort of neutral color and having that nest just up against the building here. The uh the additional uh drawings are really just more technical. So I think that concludes our our direction on the project.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Of the applicant? All right, not seeing any questions at this time. We'll move to public testimony. If you're in the uh meeting and would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And I'll turn it over to Anthony Fabre, who will walk us through any testimony and then we'll come back to the applicant.
Thank you. Uh, we do, thank you. Um, we do have a sign up. Um, I, okay, he's raised his hand now. So that is Mark Bench, and I will bring him in now.
Anthony, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you indeed. The Victorian Society finds this proposal to be generally appropriate. We believe the existing door that is proposed to become the accessible entrance was likely originally a window. It's stoop therefore being nonhistoric. The conversion of this to a side stoop and use of an incline lift seems the least disruptive argument, arrangement of it, and fits in well with the other architectural activity at the base of this building. Although a pipe railing would match the other dreary pipe rails at the building, it would not work functionally in this location. The proposed railing, taking some cues from historic ironwork at this building and elsewhere in the neighborhood, is, we believe, a better fit for this annoying building than a simple picket would be, especially because the ensemble feels like part of a building, not an added on accessibility structure. We suggest, though, that the scoring of the revised stoop platform could be simplified, perhaps imitating the larger blocks at the base of the building, while leaving a nice arched recess. And it would be advantageous to eliminate the double fence resulting from the new railing and the existing fire escape platform fence. A final thought is to consider whether the stoop and platform could be eliminated altogether and the straight through lift installed from the sidewalk to the door. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we do not have any more signups and there is no one else with their hands raised.
Okay, thank you. And Rich, do we have any written testimony?
We do. We have the resolution from Manhattan Community Board two, and they recommended approval, provided that the facing of the stairs and landing have detailing and rustication executed with the careful craftsmanship evident in the building.
Okay, thank you. All right. So I'd like to turn back to the applicant and ask if you'd like to respond to the issues raised in the testimony or by the community board.
Uh, yeah, no, certainly. Um, thank you for all those, the the feedback. It was very insightful. Um, and also the comments from the community board. I think bringing in some of that rustication certainly sort of break the scale down of just a flat face, if it was just concrete, to sort of bring that embellishment. I think we worked on a a few proposals, what we had presented to the community board, uh, was a little bit more embellished. So I think striking a balance between, you know, the implementation of the curved rail, curved cheek wall that references those adjacent conditions, and then implementing a little bit of that rustication, I think is is a good one. Um, I think the comment from Mark about the the fire escape platform, um, was he meaning to sort of carry through the railing around that to to have it echo it so it's all cohesive? Um, I think that's that's what he was saying. Um, and if so, I think that's actually a good idea because I think they're they're warring with each other right now a little bit. And so making that more unified, I think, would 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 be a good uh approach.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? All right, I am starting to unmute everyone so that we can move to close the hearing and begin our discussion. So Commissioner Gustafson, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Still moved.
And Commissioner Devonshire, would you second that motion?
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Land, would you like to start this one?
Um, sure. Let's see, I'm on mute. Yeah. Um, well, if there was ever a building that on first looking, uh, on first look, you'd think impossible to make handicap accessible, um, I think this uh design is actually ingenious and uh feels really good on on the building, even though it's introducing some new elements to it. Um, so um uh, I I have no problem with with the the approach and I think it's uh quite well done. And I think the architect has accepted some of the comments uh from testimony, which I would agree with as well. So uh, there we go.
Okay, great. Commissioner Letty?
Um, I agree. I think this is very well done and I also support the uh some of the modifications that have been presented.
Okay, Commissioner. Okay, Commissioner Jefferson?
Very well done, very thoughtful.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Yep, appropriate as is, fine.
Commissioner Chamir Baron?
Yes, this actually, for the first time, really makes sense to me. So, appropriate.
Okay. And Commissioner Chapin?
Uh, yes, uh, it's always difficult to come up with a good solutions and I think this is a, you know, a very good one and appropriate.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Goldblum, I don't know if you saw enough of this. Okay, yeah. We're just out. Okay, so I think we go around. Commissioner Devonshire, sorry.
Um, I I think this is very well done, Sarah. If if it's not considered gilding the lily, considering the amount of of robust decoration on the on this ground level. I wonder if it might be possible to to add a recessed panel to the cheek wall facing the sidewalk on this thing. And if it's cast stone, they should be able to do that relatively easily and inexpensively.
Okay, great. And Commissioner Chen? Well, I think he's had to step away as well. Okay, so I think that we have a lot of support for this creative solution. You know, we usually are struggling between sort of the elevator-type lift, a chairlift if there's a stoop or a ramp. And in this case, um, it was kind of an interesting combination of a stoop and a chairlift and I think handled very well. And and I think some of the suggestions will resolve some of the details. So I'll go ahead and make this motion in the matter of docket number LPC twenty-one dash zero three four nine two sixty-six West Ninth Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District, a Renaissance Revival style apartment building, designed by Schneider and Herter and built in nineteen hundred. This is an application to alter the areaway, replace a stoop and install a barrier-free access lift. And I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Greenwich Village Historic District. And further note that the two windows at the Ninth Street facade were converted to entries with new cast masonry stoops for two commercial tenants. I recommend approval of modifications, finding that the cast masonry stoop and diamond plate covered areaway are altered conditions and that the proposal to remove these features will facilitate barrier-free access to a first-floor commercial tenant in the least intrusive manner. That the new stoop will be contained within the historically enclosed areaway without disturbing the architectural features of the building's base. That the materials of the stoop, including cast stone and stucco and simple painted steel railings, will harmonize with the facade. That the low cheek walls and decorative iron railing will feature motifs present at other stairs on the building. And that the barrier-free access lift will be simple in design and will not call attention to itself. And that the work will not overwhelm or detract from the significant architectural features of the building or the streetscape. However, I recommend that the applicant continue to work in consultation with the staff to resolve the details of the cast stone and railing, including considering a recessed panel within that cheek wall and other details as suggested today. And Commissioner, um, Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
Great. And Rich, will you call the vote?
Jack Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Shannon, please, is back yet. Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lesby?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith? Is not back yet. Okay, with nine in favor, none opposed and two not present, the motion carries.
Okay, that's approved. Uh, continue to work with the staff on resolving those final details and good luck. And we'll move to the next item now.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Move now, Sarah.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thanks.
All right, goodbye, everyone.
Hey, we're gonna move to item number five, LPC twenty-one dash zero two seven one five. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block five sixty-seven, lot eighteen, twenty-four East Tenth Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District. This is a Greek Revival style house built in eighteen forty-four. The application is to construct additions, replace windows and remove a studio window and shutters.
And the applicants have joined the hearing. You now have control of the presentation. You just need to click to activate it and use arrow keys to advance. And you may begin.
Hello, Commissioners. Hi, um, thank you for hearing our application this afternoon. My name is Jackie Pruduvellan. I'm the preservation consultant for this project. I'm here today with Stephen Harris, John Wool and Kevin Blusiewicz of Stephen Harris Architects. The project we're showing you today is twenty-four East Tenth Street and eighteen forty-four late Greek Revival style rowhouse. The proposal is to remove the shutters at the front facade, replace the windows at the front facade, replace the existing rooftop addition and to construct rear additions. There's also associated restorative work that will be handled at staff level. All right, who has control? Next slide, please. Thank you. Twenty-four East Tenth Street stands at the south side of the street between University Place and Fifth Avenue. It's located at the northeastern edge of Greenwich Village Historic District, where its proximity to University Place gives it an allowable FAR that is unusual for rowhouses. Next slide, please. Here's the streetscape for this portion of East Tenth Street. On the south side of the street, which you see on top, the low-scale Greek Revival houses are bookended by tall apartment buildings from the early twentieth century that stand on the avenues. Uh, number twenty-four is labeled as twenty-four. It's a little little grayish house. Thank you, right there. The house next to it at number twenty-two was built as part of its row and has since had another story added, so their cornice is no longer a line. On the north side of the street at bottom, there's more variety and scale and style. Next slide, please. Here's the nineteen thirties tax photo on the left and the designation photo. Please note regarding the shutters, which are present in both photos, the designation report says, quote, "shutters have been added", which we take to mean they were not original exterior features. Next slide, please. There have been changes to this Greek Revival facade over time. As already noted, the shutters were added probably in the early twentieth century. The base and stoop were smooth coated with stucco that's been painted brown. The facade and trim have been painted shades of blue. The entry landing and stoop were likely altered and pushed back when the street was widened in the mid-nineteenth century. In the eighteen fifties, a rope molding was added at the door surround and profiled lintels were installed at the windows. And in the early twentieth century, a rooftop addition was added as well as a small skylight. Next slide, please. Here are some historic maps that show how the interior of this block has changed over time. In the eighteen fifty-four map at the top left, you can see that there were already masonry additions at the rears of twenty-six, twenty-four and twenty-two East Tenth Street, the original row to which this house belonged. At sixteen East Tenth Street in the middle of the block, the three-story masonry addition that extends almost to the rear lot line was already constructed. And another addition extending to the rear lot line was present at three East Ninth Street. The eighteen eighty-five map shows us that by this time, there was a third addition that extended to the rear lot line, the two-story addition at fifteen East Ninth Street, which is also mid-block. By the nineteen sixteen map on the lower-left corner, we see the four-story L addition at the other house from this original row, number twenty-two. We also see a four-story full-depth rear addition that was constructed at five East Ninth Street and a separate two-story house that was built at the back of seven East Ninth Street's lot with a narrow wood structure connecting the two buildings. In the nineteen thirty-six map on the lower-right corner, that back house is still present at seven East Ninth Street, connecting to the house by a wood structure that created an interior courtyard. This map also shows the house that stood at number twenty-six for the last time before it and the manufacturing buildings on the avenue were replaced by the thirteen-story apartment building that stands there now. Uh, next page, please. Now here's the block plan showing the footprints and heights of the existing additions within the block, as well as photos of those full-lot additions that are mid-block and the western end of the block. We're starting at, we're starting with the top-left corner. You're looking at the the rear of seven East Ninth Street, that back house. At the bottom, the bottom left corner, you're looking at five East Ninth Street. And then in the middle, you're looking at sixteen East Tenth Street and fifteen East Ninth Street, those large mid-block additions that I mentioned. And on the bottom right, sixteen, uh, ten to sixteen East Tenth Street, the rear additions on those houses. Next slide, please. And here's a panorama photo taken from the rear of six East Tenth Street looking east, so looking toward our subject house, showing again those full-depth rear additions. Um, and again, you're looking right, uh, the second house from the right, you're looking at the back of seven East Ninth Street, where that structure again started as a back house. Next slide, please. And we'd like to highlight that addition at fifteen East Ninth Street because although it sort of rambles and looks like it was added to over time, it actually is highly designed and had windows that are architecturally considered. In the center photo, you see the largest window with that fan light that overlooks the interior of the block. This and the addition opposite at sixteen East Tenth Street show us that within this block, there's a history of owners creating designed window openings on these deep additions and sharing views across the interior court, the interior block. Next slide, please. Here's that block plan again, this time with photos looking west from the rear yard of our subject property. Again, that's twenty-four East Tenth Street. From the top-right photo, you see the five-story L at the back of twenty-one East Ninth Street, which extends to almost the rear lot line and the one-story shed structure that does extend to the rear lot line on top of that. In the bottom-right photo, you see the back of the house opposite our house, twenty-three East Ninth Street. It's currently a veterinary clinic and it has two and a two and one-story addition that extends deep within the lot. The bottom-middle photo is the rear of this house, twenty-four East Tenth Street, and the four-story L that was added to the house next door at twenty-two East Tenth, which again was was originally built as part of the same row. And in the bottom-left photo, you see the rears of twenty-two to sixteen East Tenth Street and the rears of twenty-one to fifteen East Ninth Street. Next slide, please. Here's that same view looking west into the interior of the block with red dotted lines outlining where those substantial additions are, mid-block. And on the right is that very tall apartment building on University, on University Place that abuts twenty-four East Tenth Street. Next slide. And now to give some more background on the settlement pattern within the district, here's a wider view of that eighteen fifty-four Paris map. From the earliest days of European settlements, space on the narrow island of Manhattan has been at a premium. The city's expansion northward took off in the mid-nineteenth century with the construction of rail lines in Manhattan. Prior to that, people crowded into the settlements of of Lower Manhattan, including Greenwich Village. In the nineteenth century, to make the most of each building lot, people who had rowhouses often utilized their rear yards to construct separate stables, carriage houses, workshops for their businesses or houses built specifically for additional residential space. These rear buildings or backhouses would be accessed through a horsewalk or alley at the side of a street-facing house or by simply walking through the main house. You can see these rear lot structures on this map, some for residential use in red and some for commercial use in green. Next slide, please. Likewise, it was also common to find smaller outbuildings, such as outhouses and sheds, built of wood uh, at the rears of houses. Over time, these smaller structures were often replaced with more substantial masonry structures, which sometimes connected to a backhouse and resulted in the in the creation of a modest courtyard. By the turn of the twentieth century, these backhouses were being adapted for residential use or artist studios or performance spaces. Likewise, it was also common to find smaller outbuildings, such as outhouses and sheds built of wood at the rears of houses. Next slide, please. This is twelve and a half, which, sorry, twelve and a half West Seventeenth Street, which while not in the district, is an example of a backhouse that is accessed through an alley that was that was once a horsewalk. Next slide, please. And here are some historic backhouses that we can still find within this historic district, looking at seventeen Grove Street, ninety-three Perry Street and two twenty-four West Eleventh Street. Next slide, please. And here are backhouses at three forty A West Eleventh Street, eleven Cornelia and twenty-one Cornelia. You'll note that the interior, particularly of three forty A West Eleventh, has a very, the treatment there is a broad, um, hardscaped courtyard. Next slide, please. And here are two backhouses in the district that have masonry structures connecting the front house and the backhouse. The backhouse on the top photo, uh, in the top photos is twelve, one-twelve Waverly Place. It's hard to get photos of structures that are not visible from the street, so we had to get creative with our images. These images on top are, uh, well, these images on top show that there are, there is a two-story masonry structure connecting the front and backhouse at one-twelve Waverly with a hardscaped interior courtyard. The photos on the bottom are of ten Bedford Street, which likewise, um, has a masonry structure connecting the front and backhouses. With each of these properties, the backhouse is accessed by walking through the front house. Next slide, please. And here's one more example of a backhouse in the district at two sixty-three West Twelfth Street. The photo at at top left, uh, is the front house on the street, which is, um, which has a gated alley at the right. One walks through that alley into the hardscaped courtyard to where there's a one-story masonry structure connecting the front and backhouses. The black and white photos, um, in the bottom-right corner show us that the the masonry connector and the backhouse itself originally had punched window openings. Um, next slide, please. And with that, I would like to introduce John Wool of Stephen Harris Architects, who will discuss the design proposal with you.
Okay, and just before we get into the design, we do have a question on your part of it, Jackie. So Commissioner Goldblum, please go ahead.
Yeah, hi, Jackie. I just wanted to ask you if you thought, if there was any evidence for the, this could be staffed too, for the modifications to the front facade being related to one of those early twentieth century classicizations, or I don't know what the proper term is. I'm sure there is one.
Well, which modification do you mean in particular?
Shutters, the moldings on the on the lintels, the added detail to the door surround.
The lintels look to me like typical mid-nineteenth century profiled lintels, not really classical. The, let me think, the shutters, maybe we can, if you, I'm not sure if you can tell in this photo, but the shutters themselves have little hearts in them. Which, you know, I wouldn't call classical either, um, but definitely early twentieth century. Does that answer your question?
Uh, okay. Does staff have, I, I just want to know if we should be looking at those modifications as as improvements that have historical value. And I guess that might be more of a staff question.
I mean, I don't think we have, we don't have facts from the designation report, but the the painting of the facade in a particular scheme, along with the addition of the shutters and some other alterations that you point, as you have pointed out, are indicative of early twentieth century changes that at times the commission has found to be significant in their own right. And I think the studio window up on the roof is somewhat contemporaneous with that as well, but we, again, we don't have dates on these things.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'd just like to add, in normal times, I would have been able to do more research, um, to try to flesh out what was, you know, not provided by the designation report. Normally, I'd be going to the municipal archives and pulling the file there, for example. But, um, it just wasn't possible to get the normal resources right now.
My only concern is, you know, these are, it seems like there was a concerted aesthetic effort at some point in the early twentieth century to modify the appearance of the building. Uh, and I, you know, we often consider that. Uh, I'm just not sure we should consider it here. And if there's any historical evidence, one way or the other, it would probably help that along.
Okay.
All right, great. Thank you. Now we'll move to the design.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, so what we're looking at here is the existing condition and the proposed condition. Uh, the proposed condition in context with the adjacent building number twenty-two and the Bochera Apartment Building on University Place. Next piece. Um, the the restorative work, uh, I believe Jackie touched on briefly. Let me talk you through it a little bit. Um, it's going to be removing the blue paint. Um, we are proposing to remove the twentieth-century shutters. We're also proposing to restore the brownstone, which is now just a, uh, just a cementitious wash that's over. There's no profiler shape to it. There's no profile or shape to it, so we'll be bringing back in, uh, the coursing work of the original brownstone. We'll be restoring ironwork. And we are also proposing to replace the existing windows. We have had some, some, um, study of the windows done, and it appears as though portions of them, uh, may be original. One of the challenges, however, is that this particular house is located at a through-street in the village, Tenth Street. Which has a major intersection at University Place. This house is very, very close to that intersection. Our clients have lived in this house for fifteen years. And they have suffered, um, from all of the noise associated with that intersection for a very long time. They also have had significant issues with weather stripping and trying to maintain a a proper thermal. Enclosure with the existing windows. And so we are asking, uh, given the the relatively, uh, damaged condition of the existing windows and, um. The performance enhancements both acoustically and thermally, uh, to replace the windows. Next, please. This is looking at the existing, uh, windows and shutters. So again, to the point of, um, the exterior shutters, I think that they are purely decorative. The house still maintains, even though they've been painted shut, um, the original inner shutters. And so there never would have been a need for exterior shutters. So this is again showing that the house has always had, uh, interior shutters for the windows. Next. On the roof, uh, we're looking here at the existing roof scape. If we were to look at the, um, upper-left corner, you'll see there that there's a major studio skylight at the adjacent property. We have a more utilitarian little skylight, um, sitting on the front of the house, but it is not in in our perspective. A significant studio skylight, it's it's more of a utilitarian skylight, um, that sort of sits there in the front. Looking across the, uh, the the scape here, what you see is that we're going to be replacing, uh, the existing rooftop addition. With a proposed rooftop addition that will be, um, of the same size, um, as the existing. It sits at the same plane back in the property and it sits at the same height. Next, please. Uh, this is showing you, um, the roof scape, um, the existing, and again, you see that dotted line that shows. Where our proposed rooftop addition will be, which sits in the same plane as the existing rooftop addition. We are proposing to remove the existing utilitarian skylight in order to create a landscape terrace for use off of the rooftop addition. Mechanical equipment, uh, is now on the rooftop addition. It has been mocked up and, um, it is not visible. Next. Looking at the existing, uh, rear, um, this is, uh, showing the the condition and state of it. It's, um, the the house, while built as part of, um, a row of three, uh, no longer maintains any, uh, connection or relationship to the one remaining. Uh, house of the row, which is twenty-two. Uh, number twenty-six was was demolished in the construction of the Bochere Apartment, which is the thirteen-story sheer wall that is adjacent to the site. Next, please. This is a, um, historical kind of analysis of of the massing of the house as it is today. So to the left, you have, um, what we, um, imagined is probably the original configuration of the house when it was built. The mid-image shows a kind of mid to late nineteenth-century conjecture of of kind of what traditions had been put on. So there, at that point, was, uh, probably a three-story, um, rear yard addition. And the original roof was still intact. Uh, by the time we get to the early twentieth century, uh, there's been a rooftop addition that's been added, um, above the existing rear. Uh, modifications to the windows, um, of that rear. And, um, the, uh, other modifications that you see, um, here. Next. Uh, so this is the existing, um, site plan enassing and the proposed enassing. The scheme involves the creation of a backhouse, um, on the back of the property, a courtyard that that sets between the backhouse. And the original front house. A a boot addition on the rear of that front house and a connector to the backhouse. Next. Uh, this is the existing side elevation. This is, there's a nine-foot area way, uh, between the apartment building and this. This was obviously originally not an exposed facade, this was a shared party wall, uh, with number twenty-six, uh, which was demolished in the early twentieth century. Next. This is the proposed side. So what you see here is you see adjustments to some of the window openings and locations. You see the, the boot extension on the back. You see the courtyard and you see, uh, the backhouse, uh, with the connector piece. Next, please. This is, um, uh, the west elevation, uh, which is looking down into the block. So what you see here is you see, uh, the window, which is again, um, picking up its clue on, uh, the other properties that we saw on the donut that Jackie showed. Uh, where there's a architectural window onto the side. There is also a change in the brickwork between the connector piece and the backhouse. Um, and so you see that there with a small punch opening. And then you see, very, um, aligned with a rear boot addition. A small portion of the top of our boot addition. Next, please. Uh, this is showing, uh, the courtyards. So this is the three sides of the courtyard. Uh, the one in the middle is looking to the west, and so you're seeing the side of, uh, the back boot addition and a portion of the connector. The two extreme images are, on the left, you have, uh, the view towards, uh, the backhouse. And to the right, you have, uh, the view towards the front. One thing that that should be noted here is that, um, uh, the existing window openings on the rear facade. Have all been modified and the top floor of the current rear facade is a twentieth-century addition. Next. Um, so you can see that in this, this drawing here. So in the drawing, you'll see that that the small casement windows that you see at the top is a twentieth-century addition. Beneath that are windows that are much larger than their front window counterparts. Um, and so the supposition is that these were probably enlarged as well. So there's very little, um, original material left in this. And again, it has no continuity, uh, with the existing rear wall of the adjacent house from the row number twenty-two. And again, the two rear images, the proposed condition and then the proposed condition is seen from the rear lot line. Uh, one thing to keep in mind with the rear lot line is the adjacent building on Ninth Street has two unfenestrated floors. On the lower portion of the building. Next. Uh, this is a model that that gives you a sense of the three-dimensional quality of it. So, um, you'll see the the front building, um, the boot extension, uh, the backhouse and the connector piece. On the top corner, you'll see, uh, the view, um, as to the west, uh, looking down the donut. Um, and then, um, the inner courtyard, um, is seen from the service area of, uh, the adjacent apartment building. Next. Uh, this is a section, um, indicating, uh, the profile of the existing, um, structure as well as, uh, the new additions. Uh, so you'll see in the dotted line, um, that that this again is is in line with, um, the existing, uh, height of the 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 current. House and, um, maintains a relationship to the existing, um, rear massing of that main house. Next. Seeing it in context, um, uh, again, this is existing on the left and the proposed on the right. It's a very heterogeneous, um. Set of facades back in this garden, um, and, uh, we believe that this is keeping, um, in context with that. Next. Uh, these are some views of the the house. And, uh, looking from, uh, the west, uh, towards the property. Next. Uh, these are views from the east. There is a, a small handrail, uh, that towards the front of the the roof terrace, uh, that will be visible and it was mocked up. Uh, the proposal is to have that, uh, be inside of a planter, and so what will be visible are are plants. Uh, not the railing, but the railing has been shown for backup purposes. This is, uh, two, uh, views, uh, one is, um, again, looking at it from the corner of, uh, university and across, outside of the district, across to the property. Again, this is the last house in the district. And then, uh, behind it on Ninth Street, that areaway behind the apartment building continues to Ninth Street. There's a tiny slot of space, uh, that does allow you to see the existing, uh, rear elevation. Which is again, not not in great condition and certainly not very composed. Ironwork, um, that that one has to sort of kind of catch this glimpse. Next. Uh, this is just photographs of the mock-up. Again, um, there is, uh, this little areaway here at number C, uh, where you can kind of, uh, look in alongside of. The property, but it is a a very, very oblique view, um, very, very tight to the side. Next. Uh, floor plans existing and proposed, very few changes to the cellar. Next. Um, on the ground floor, removal of the existing, uh, rear addition. Um, and then extension of that space out, uh, towards the rear property line. Again, this, this building does have very unique zoning opportunities because it is, uh. Classified as part of University Avenue or the University Place, um, zoning. It is the only property on this, on this row here that has that zoning. But it does participate in, um, the hundred percent lot coverage and, uh, the significant FAR that is available on University Place. Next. Parlor floor, existing and proposed, showing the courtyard and the backhouse. Second floor, proposed above, I mean, proposed below, existing, um, above. Uh, the rooftop of the backhouse, uh, with, uh, the rear boot. Next. And then lastly, um, the rooftop, um, both existing and, uh, proposed. And the roof scape. Next. Uh, again, so this is the proposal, again, showing, um, uh, the restored, uh, front, um, and, uh, the proposed rear.
And with with that, we're open to your questions and comments.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We do have some questions. Commissioner Devonshire, please go ahead. Just accept my request to unmute.
You, you mentioned justification for not putting shutters back on the front. Did you investigate at all where shutter pintles would have been located on the brick molds of the window trim?
Jackie, do you want to answer that?
Um, I unfortunately have never seen the house of clothes, so I can't answer that question. Can one of the architects answer that question?
We, we, we have seen evidence of of some pintles. We don't know, uh, I don't believe they're related to these shutters, per se.
No, they're not related to these shutters, but they're related to shutters that would have been there prior to the work that took place in the early twentieth century, correct?
Uh, possibly, yes.
Thank you.
While we're on the topic. Yeah. Line, can I ask a question of Commissioner Devonshire, please? Does Commissioner Devonshire think that the photos we showed of the interior casing, does that look like interior shutters to you?
They are, and it it's irrelevant to the, the, uh, locations of the shutters on the exterior. They they frequently, uh, coexist on the interior and the exterior. Cause they they provide different services.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner Goldblum.
Sorry about that. You made a key choice about your connector to put it on the west side of your property as opposed to the east. Which has the effect of basically stopping the courtyard on your side of the block, uh, at your property line. Why did you choose to do it there as opposed to on the other side? Facing.
Let's, let's go back to the model, Kevin. If we could.
And as an allied question while you're turning the pages. Were, was the charismatic window that you pointed to, was it a lotline window on the adjacent building down the block? Or, uh, was it set back?
It's a lotline window, it's on a, a full, uh, rear yard extension. And, um, it it has, it has as much, um, to do with the circulation within the house. Than than anything else, which is that, um, this, this allowed the circulation to to work better. It also allowed us to, um, connect that to, uh, the rear boot extension, which is, uh, paired up against the neighbor's rear boot as well. Uh, so it allowed us to to link that massing together and then extend it out along that side.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Okay, I don't think we have any other questions at this time, so we'll move to public testimony and we may come back with more questions. If you're in the meeting and would like to testify on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. We will start with anyone who signed up in advance and I'll turn it over to Anthony to walk us through the testimony.
Thank you, Sarah. We do have a few people who have signed up to speak. But first person I'm going to bring in is Sarah. Sarah, you should be in the meeting.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Sarah Bean-Atman from Village Preservation. Village Preservation has several concerns about the proposal for twenty-four East Tenth Street. Particularly significant home in the Greenwich Village Historic District. Which housed ACLU co-founder and noted civil rights legal advocate Arthur Garfield Hayes in the early to mid-twentieth century. And the preeminent American impressionist artist, uh, rather painter Jay Alden Weir in late nineteenth century. The house in its current form retains both Greek Revival elements and details from its mid-nineteenth-century construction. As well as the changes to the front facade and the addition of the skylight, which most likely dates to the nineteen twenties or earlier. When row houses like this were being reimagined and renovated throughout Greenwich Village and New York. As part of a movement to reclaim and update these buildings. We feel that the removal of the twentieth-century details, including the skylight, pastel paint and wood shutters, would erase this important chapter of village history. We also feel that the proposal, the proposed rail at the front, at the roof is too visible and should be moved back. Finally, the rear addition is huge with a very large connector piece, which will require the loss of historic material at the rear facade. The LPC typically requires that the upper floor at the rear facades be left intact. We ask that this be done here as well and believe that the rear addition should be scaled back significantly. To make a more appropriate and compatible addition to the house, block and district. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, next up, I'm going to bring in, uh, Mark Bench. Mark, you should be in the meeting.
Anthony, thank you. This is Mark Bench, foreign on behalf of the Victorian Society, New York. This proposal managed is both to erase important features of the history of Greenwich Village from this house. While at the same time, it introduces massive new features that confuse precedents for appropriateness. The early twentieth-century alterations to the front of the building, including the charming window shutters. Studio window addition on the roof and possibly the facade paint are now one hundred years old and characteristic of the village's artist. And Bohemian quaint period. We believe such changes have themselves gained importance as historic alterations that should be retained. While a case could be made to return the building to an earlier period of significance, the proposed work does not do that. A building of this age would surely have had exterior blinds, notwithstanding the possible existence of interior-built shutters. And the proposed visible railing and planters at the root edge to allow for a larger roof deck and not historic, are not historic or appropriate. However, the proposed alterations to the existing fourth-floor setback addition, including its front windows, seem appropriate. As they would not be visible from street level and the windows are similar to historic studio windows. The applicant has reminded us of the existence of backhouses in early row house neighborhoods. And the pictures of the interior of this block demonstrate that several large rear additions exist. that several large rear additions exist, including some extending to the lotline. In fact, rarely have we seen a more picturesque rear window vision of a block interior than this. History has given us, or at least a few of us, a serendipitous urban plan, urban landscape to be celebrated and protected. The view from the windows of the proposed new addition will be lovely. Less so, the view from other buildings looking back towards the less charming proposed addition. We do not believe the fact that the existing probably pre-designation additions is especially relevant to appropriateness. How many more additions could be added before the charm, character and history of this block were to be, were obliterated? Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Next up, I'm going to bring in Kelly Carroll.
Kelly Carroll, Historic District Council. HTC would like to compliment the applicant and their team on the proposed facade treatment. This building has long stood out on a lovely block, but not in a good way. HTC's committee had vigorous discussion about shutters. We fully understand that the current shutters are not historic, but shutter enthusiasts on the committee wondered if there might have been an original exterior shutters, which have long since been replaced. We mentioned this as a point of discussion for the commission. What should not be a debatable point, however, is the removal of the studio window. Studio windows are an important historic feature in Greenwich Village in that they represent a specific reuse of the neighborhood's historic buildings in its distinct cultural history. While studio windows did not cause Greenwich Village to become one of America's best-known artists colonies, they are physical evidence of that history and should be retained wherever possible. Regarding the proposed rear yard addition, HTC found the design to be a little institutional for this residential neighborhood. More objectionable, however, is the sheer bulk of the addition. This is a very large addition and no amount of comparing it to larger ones will make it any smaller. Additionally, this is not a back house reached by a horse walk. It would be lovely if it were. We are big fans of backhouses, but it is not. This is a rear yard addition, which is simply too big for this block and it should be reduced. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the signups we have, but we do have Christabel Goff, who has raised her hand, so we'll bring her back in. Christabel, you just have to unmute your microphone.
Yes, you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. This is Christabel Goff for the Society for the Architecture of the City. The deathly cold hand of wealth and good taste has come to erase the memory of the perhaps cheaper and sillier v de boem of the early 20th century in Greenwich Village, when it was an artist's quarter. Here we see the reversal of an old conversion of a townhouse. It became a multiple dwelling with studios, marked by the cutout hearts on the shutters, the studio window in the attic. There was a time when the LPC preserved studio window alterations as a character defining feature. We hope that time has not passed. The skylight, in this case, is similar to perhaps dozens of others throughout this large historic district. It's totally characteristic. It is not smaller than perhaps the majority of studio windows. Apart from honoring today's almost obligatory fashion for adding bulk, this application might almost be viewed as a facade restoration. Neat and severe, correct? And why should we be reminded of the fun people had a lifetime ago? Of the works of art they created? Jay Alden Weir, a major American painter, was in this building. On nearby Patchen Place, the poet E.E. Cummings used to stand under the poet Juno Barnes's Garrett window and shout.
Christabel, you're muted. I will ask you to unmute.
I did unmute. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay. So I was just mentioning two village poets from the period that this house represents. And the wonderful enclave of Greenwich Village that was created by artists, poets and painters will be losing traces of their history, one studio window at a time, unless there can be a consensus to celebrate it instead. Thank you.
Christabel, what did E.E. Cummings shout? We missed it.
Is that where I was lost? He shouted, hey, Juno, you still alive up there?
Thank you.
Thank you. That is all we have for public testimony.
All right. Thank you. And Rich, do we have any written testimony?
We do have a resolution from the community board. They recommended approval of the application, but also mentioned that the approval of the application should not be taken as precedent for usual rear yard additions to row houses.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Let me turn back to the applicants. John, would you like to respond to the comments in the testimony?
Yes, I would. Thank you very much. I would, I would start by saying that if we could pull up the image of the existing rear of the house, the photograph, that would be helpful in discussing the comment made about preserving the top of the building. Okay. This is, this is helpful. I don't know, Kevin. Let me just look at the elevation. I'll talk about it. But there is the one image, I think, of the actual photo of those upper two floors. Actually, why don't you grab that? I don't, yeah. Isn't there the one that showed that? Anyway, I guess the, the point is that, is that the what appears to be a diminutive attic story is actually a 20th century addition. The, what had been smaller openings of the original attic floor of this building were enlarged when that addition was put on and were turned into facade windows. So I think that, that there, there's no original fenestration. The top floor never was original. It is on the same plane as the original rear facade extended up. And so there's, there's no continuity or, or any kind of memory of what that original rear cornice line had looked like. On the, the discussion about precedent on, on this, again, I do want to emphasize again that this is a very unique property in the sense that it is the last house in the district. It has very distinct zoning opportunities that are not available elsewhere on the block, with perhaps the exception being the one property behind on Ninth Street, given that the thinness of the building on University Place. So again, I think that, that this is not a precedent really for the village. This is really about a very unique, specific set of circumstances that allow this house to be expanded in this way. And then lastly, on the studio addition, you know, our intention here is to restore a, a floor below this that is divided between two spaces. Whenever that skylight was put in, that whole front of the house walls were demolished and, and it was opened up full width. That skylight will no longer relate to the plan of the floor below, which is more in keeping with the original layout of the house. And again, looking at the adjacent studio windows, which, which in my opinion, really do represent the spirit of the village and the grand studio windows that one sees in many locations. I, I really feel that it's more appropriate to call this a skylight.
Thank you. Commissioners, any final questions? Okay. I am starting to request to unmute all of you so that we can move to close the hearing and begin our discussion. So Commissioner Luxrie, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
And Commissioner Gustafson, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. So the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. And we had a very thorough presentation and a lot of testimony and a lot to think about. So why don't we go ahead? We have work on the front to consider as well as work on the back. Commissioner Goldblum, would you like to start this one?
Sure. So talking about the front, I, I think this is something where the staff should weigh in. I think that there is something to be said for, I mean, this is not a case where we have a sheared shaved front facade that was clearly denuded of its detail. We have evidence of a, a designed historic intent to modify the style of the building at a time when it was being done commonly and that the commission has in the past, given historic significance to. So I would ask that the applicant work with the staff to determine what degree of preservation should be made. My gut tells me that, that it is the wrong move to take it back to a pure, to basically erase the 20th century efforts. But I would, I would be willing to let that go with the staff. And I think that the, 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 I, I agree with the testimony about the north light. I, I think it is a significant feature. We have preserved others of a similar size. We have also allowed for the reconstruction or repositioning of such elements. So I could see them coming forward with something that was a modification to it, but I think that its presence here should be retained in some, in some manner. Onto the, onto the big one. I think that the, the most interesting way that I have of looking at, at it is if you go to page nine of 60, that view of the backyards from the ground level, and there's a series of them, but that was the one that my browser was on. One, I think the one, the one either before it or after it. There, there it is. What that, that, this image tells me a lot. And it was a great presentation, by the way, and really in-depth and really interesting and rich. What this tells me is that there's a very particular topography to this courtyard. And that that topography is really a fascinating and unique, unique one, but one that should be honored and extended and recognized and grappled with when you're doing a, a proposed modification to it. And what this tells me is that the topography is, is a valley. It's like these cascading volumes that, that descend as they go towards the center. And every image that I saw that you presented seemed to, for me anyway, to validate that perception. So the proposal, which, the, the proposal, I think, fails on two, two fronts to recognize that. First of all, it puts its two-story volume at the property line, which is the case for only one of the additions. The majority of them that I could see from the site plan stepped down to the center. It's where it was like one, one story at the, at the property line. And it also closes the court. Whereas the court really reads, I mean, despite all the cacophony of this block, the court, the courtyard really reads at its top floors. I mean, it kind, this, you know, these images are almost an argument for the preservation of the top floor as a plain. And even on the building immediately next door, the red, with the red addition, it doesn't go to the top floor. The image that we see in the presentation, taken from the, from the garden level, seems to show that. But other images show that, that, that it stops a, a level short of the top floor. And I think that that should be respected. I, I would suggest that the applicant flip the courtyard so that the massing and the height were up against the building and the cascading kind of topography of the court was respected and enhanced. And look at, look, look at how the massing reads relative to that particular quality of that court.
Okay. Thank you. And Commissioner Devonshire?
Yeah. Thanks, Sarah. First, I have to express my sympathy that the owner of this building has had to suffer through living in this building in the village for 15 years.
Terrible.
Hardship, I realize. The, I agree with everything that Michael has said about the rear courtyard. I, I also, I feel like this somehow is an addition that happens to have a house attached to it. And I think it, it needs to be reduced significantly in, in mass. With regard to the studio, I, I think the studio light, the window can be modified. I do not think it has to disappear. And with regard to the front facade, I, I don't think that the changes that took place in the 20th century deserve to be wiped out at all. I think it's a very important part of the history of this building, the history of the village and the history of the city. And I think that the changes that took place in the 20th century have to be celebrated. In this case, we have original windows in this building that can be restored and that should happen as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen?
I, I do agree with the previous comment about the proportions of the lotline windows as well as the, the proportion of the, and I think the staff should weigh in on those discussions. So there's an area to look at.
Okay. Commissioner Luxrie?
There is, there's a lot here, literally. I have to say, just starting at the front, I'm, I'm having a little less of a problem with the with keeping the, hold on a minute. Shutters. Because when I look at the, I, I appreciate everything my colleagues are saying, but when I look at the, the current block, I, I don't really see any windows, any homes with shutters. And I feel like the changes that are being made here are consistent with that in terms of look and feel. And I can accept that. I do feel that the studio at the top is really representative of an important period in time in the, in the village and should be retained and incorporated in, into the, the building. I, by the way, appreciate the restoration of the brownstone at the front and the overall, you know, the, the overall work done, done in that place. I do agree that there's too much bulk here. Now, how the bulk should be distributed is something to be, I, I think Michael Goldblum's thoughts are very, very interesting and should be taken into account. But I'm, I'm not feeling like it must, that, that must be the direction. I, I, I think if you go to the, let's see, what page is it? I don't know. Even if you just go to the model on page 32. It's just too much bulk here. I'm, I'm not understanding why the addition, the L addition coming off those two floors are necessary. You know, I even feel like it's high at the back. I do, while I'm a big fan of fenestration and light, I, I do have to concur with the sentiments of, of one of the comments from the community that there's something about the way that the, the windows are used that does make it feel very generic. And I, I think the term was corporate. I hate to go that far, but I, I would say lacking in character in a way. And I, I think that should be looked at. And I, I just, from a look and feel, I just want to go back to an image in an earlier page that the applicant referred to. referred to, and I think that that is page 17? No, yeah, 17. Where we were shown this addition and connection between front and back that, to me, and this might refer back to some of what Michael was saying, seems to work so well because it, instead of creating a huge mass, it creates an addition that works well with the front of the house, but undulates a little bit and in and of itself stands alone in a, in a very, in, in a way that, that, that seems to work very well from a massing standpoint and from an architectural articulation standpoint. So, so I, you know, agree that this, this needs to be restudied.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
A couple of issues. I, I like the courtyard, but I've pointed that the courtyard was facing west and not facing east to gather the morning sun coming from the east side. And I think that, as Commissioner Michael said, if they switch it to the booth on the other side, that courtyard would make sense in terms of sun. I think the windows, they're characterless. And I think if they thought about them in kind of a historical context, kind of solid void, solid void, it would work much better. I think the height of the booth, from the second to the third floor, I think, yeah, it, it's excessive. It's, it's, it's just too much bulk, understandably. And the detailing of the handrail, the atmospheric quality is modern instead of that village quality, that, that, that atmosphere, that roughness, that it's just missing something. This becomes a, a very 1930s building in Europe, if you look at it in terms of handrail color. And finally, studio windows must remain. I mean, they are, and I'm torn about the, I'm torn about the the, the window.
The windows. The shutters.
The shutters because the frontiness of that is the village. The modern moment, the time we live in, everything is kind of cleaner and, and and so I'm torn. I, I would rather see the front facade without the shutters, but the back have that character, that feeling of, of, of historic addition.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
Well, first of all, I, I do have to comment, it was great to hear Christabel's voice earlier, which prompts me to want to shout out, "Hey, Devonshire, you still alive up there?" I do agree with Commissioner Devonshire's comments 100%, so I will not waste your time with anything additional.
Okay. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yes, I also agree with Commissioner Devonshire's and now Gustafson's comments. I, I do think, just to, just underscore how important the studio window is to retain. And I also think, I mean, it's, it's a tough thing that this architect often has a kind of an unimpeachable sort of a cult. You know, it's considered, it's thoughtful, it's elegant, the work always is. And yet, as was stated by others, it's, it, it takes on a certain kind of like too good, too much good taste for, that, that suffocates these, this building. And I, I, I know that that's, just sounds so subjective, but I, I don't really know how else to say it. So, so at least if, if the retention of the studio window will kind of snowball keeping other aspects on, on the rear, then I think that would be an appropriate thing.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I agree with a, a lot of comments of the, of other commissioners and particularly that it's not necessary to remove all the accretions that have developed historically, that that's relatively interesting in this case, and I think appropriate to keep some of them. I also think that the skylight, I, excuse me, the studio window should be kept. And the main issue, of course, is the bulk. I, I think that there is too much bulk. You have the sense that this has become a much larger building than it was. And it, and it seems to really still be one building, although the architect has attempted, you know, to give the sense of a courtyard and a back, a back house. I think the connector should only be one, one floor, not, and that the back house should be smaller. I mean, I, I think it could be a back house and a connector, but I think those elements are so large that it's created a sense of just really expanding the bulk of the, of the main, the, the existing building much too much. So that's my reaction.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I, thank you. I want to thank everybody, the applicants for a very rich and thorough presentation, the public for your very thoughtful comments, and commissioners for your thoughtful direction that you've given today. And I think we're going to take no action and we're going to ask the applicants to consider all of our comments and think about revisions. But I think it is clear that most commissioners find that skylight to be an important and very significant feature. But there might be some flexibility with relocating it or modifying it to incorporate it into the design, that the bulk needs to be reconsidered, both in terms of its height and massing, but also its fenestration and design and character, general character. And, and on the front, I think, you know, we're still, I think, a little mixed on the removal of the shutters, but I do think that there was significant opposition from some of the commissioners. And so I do think that if a revised proposal should include it, we should have a lot more research and information to back it up. It does seem that, that there are pintles that date possibly earlier, that interior shutters and exterior shutters could coexist. And so that doesn't necessarily mean that they didn't exist at one time. And then I think also just thinking about the significance of the later 20th century alterations, the studio window and the facade changes, and think about how those all work together and what the right response is here as you continue to develop the right response in the back as well. So we'll take no action and we'll ask you to continue to work on this and let the staff know when you're ready. And I think that now concludes our morning session. We are going to break for lunch. We'll come back actually at 1:30. And commissioners, if you want to come back about five minutes early, that will give us time to set up the meeting again for the afternoon session. So commissioners, just turn your video and audio off and we'll ask all members of the public, we'll ask all members of the public to voluntarily leave.